In accordance with clause 5.3 of the Code of Meeting Practice, I inform the persons attending this meeting that: A) The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on council's website; and B) The persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start today's proceedings, I'd like to invite Reverend Richard Mills from Denham Court, England Church, who will read the acknowledgement of country, the affirmation and the prayer for council, which will then be followed by the National Anthem. Can invite everybody, invite everyone to please stand.
The acknowledgement of council, of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Kaburgu clan of the Darug nation. Also acknowledge that this land was accessed by the peoples of the Daharul and Darug nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by the council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of the council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Let us pray. Most gracious God, ruler of all the nations, we pray for this council, direct and prosper all its work to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of all our local communities, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice may be established among us. We thank you for the Christmas season and help us to celebrate the entry of your son, the Lord Jesus Christ, into the world. We ask that the messages he brings of peace and goodwill be present in this meeting today. We pray this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Reverend Mills, for your praise and well wishes to council. We appreciate you taking the time to visit us and offer your praise for us here today. And on behalf of myself and all of the councils of Liverpool, please, we'd like to wish you a very Merry Christmas and hope that you can take on those wishes to your congregation. We have no councillors attending remotely. There are no apologies, any condolences? No condolences. The next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 20th of November and 26th of November 2024. Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor AJ. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Hart?
Comma three, I've got a conflict of interest, non pecuniary, less than significant. I think one of the proposed grant recipients, I've had business dealings before with the director of that organisation.
And will you?
I'll leave the chamber.
So it's a non, was it a non pecuniary?
Less than significant.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Well now, there is no speakers in the public forum. We have representations, we have three speakers today. The first one is Mr Michael Angelovic, who would like to address council on CFD03, How to Expise the Delivery Parks on Austro-Mitson Park. Two merrill minutes, of which there are three. The first one is Liverpool 2050. Liverpool is on a journey with an exciting and unlimited future before us. Our journey commenced before European settlement, when the First Nations people of the Darug and Dharawal nations met here on the bend of the Tagara River, we now call the George's River. They met to trade and exchange stories and culture. Many years into the future, colonial governor Macquarie marked this bend in the river for an inland port, taking timber and agricultural produce downstream to Sydney Town. Today, the city of Liverpool, with nearly 250,000 residents, still hold those long-held aspirations for the city. Our community is young, they are becoming more educated, and they are ambitious for their future. Liverpool has emerged as a capital of South West Sydney, complementing, not rivaling, our sister capital of Parramatta. We are the freight, logistics and transport capital of Western Sydney, a university city and a city renowned of medical and health innovation through the Liverpool Innovation Precinct. Liverpool stands on a precipice of national economic and cultural significance, but only if we seize the opportunity as a council and show strategic, longer-term vision beyond each electoral cycle. I ask the question, where is Liverpool heading into the future and how will we get there? Council has the power to shape the city's destiny and its people. Ten years ago, council shared a vision to become a university city. Only on Friday, we announced the historic investment the University of Wollongong has made with us here at Liverpool Civic Place to expand the educational offering to our community. That parallels Western Sydney University, who continue to provide key education in our city, for which we are grateful. Tomorrow, we will sign an MOU with Notre Dame University, offering to open up a student hub alongside the MOU with the University of New South Wales. That vision ten years ago has shaped our city and provided life-changing opportunities for our community. I ask the question, what does our community want to see Liverpool become by 2050? The year 2050 seems a long way away, but the eight babies born at Liverpool Hospital each day will be 25 in 2050. That is one short generation away. Global cities around the world and here in Sydney, like the cities of Sydney and Parramatta, are developing and adopting longer-term strategic visions that sit above and broadly inform their community's strategic plans. Leading corporations are also adopting 2050-style strategic plans, shaping and guiding their organisation's future. If we want to see change in 2050, we need to act now. With the fast-paced changes we witness every day, the population growth we are experiencing and the potential for our city from the new airport, it is timely for Liverpool City Council to chart a strategic path to the future. To be frank, council, I think we all share some disappointment that the promised benefits for Liverpool from the new airport in Bradfield have not been fulfilled. A clear, community-driven Liverpool 2050 strategic document can help address this as we negotiate the opportunities and investments from stakeholders, including government, businesses and overseas investors. Liverpool 2050 will give a stronger voice to our community and cement council as a leading voice for this region. As part of the current strategic plan programme, I propose that council develop an overarching Liverpool 2050 strategy to answer the following questions about our future: What sort of city do you want Liverpool to be in 2050? The Liverpool 2050 strategy should address the key areas of: Economic and future industry. Global investment. Environment and sustainability. Arts and culture. First nations and multiculturalism. Social cohesion and our people. Equal opportunity for all communities. Housing and urban centres. Transport and connectivity. Innovations and research. Sustainable development goals. And I would like to move that council incorporates, number one, an overarching, long-term strategic plan called Liverpool 2050 as part of the community strategic plan process. Two, ensures that the development of the plan utilizing the CSP process asks the community and stakeholders the key question, what sort of city do you want Liverpool to be in 2050? Three, endorses a report on Liverpool 2050 to come back to council by February 2025. And I move that way. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare unanimous. Next one is regarding the Warren Service Way. Council plays a vital role in fostering community engagement and supporting the invaluable work for our local not-for-profit organisations. Today, I bring forward an initiative to assist two organisations situated near the Warren Service Way car park, the Community 89.32 GLF radio station and the Liverpool Historical Society. Both organisations contribute to the cultural and social fabric of Liverpool. Despite their critical contributions, these organisations operate on limited budgets, with many of their members volunteering their time and resources. Parking costs can present an unnecessary burden on their staff and volunteers, potentially detracting them from their ability to focus on delivering essential services and programmes. To address this, I propose that council investigate the feasibility of providing a limited number of free parking passes for use in the Warren Service Way car park by these two organisations. Such a measure would not only ease the financial strain, but also serve as a tangible acknowledgement of their vital role in our community. And I'd like to move that council request the CEO to prepare a report examining the feasibility of providing free parking passes to the community radio station and Liverpool Historical Society for use in the Warren Service Way car park. Two, to include in the report the number of passes required to support the organisations effectively, any potential financial implications for council and any other relevant considerations. And three, consider this report at a future council meeting. And I formally move that way. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. The last merrill minute is regarding Liverpool, Stage Two Liverpool Civic Place. Liverpool Civic Place is a cornerstone of our city's ambitious vision to transform into a thriving, modern destination. Ten years in the making, stage one of this visionary project has now been delivered, culminating in the signing of a lease with the University of Wollongong for council's building. It not only completes the first stage, but also solidifies Liverpool's standing as a university city, placing us firmly on the map as a hub for education, innovation and opportunity. It's now time to turn our attention to stage two, an essential next step in realising the full potential of Liverpool Civic Place. This stage involves our collaboration with Bilt to bring the neighbouring commercial building to life. Bilt has indicated that they are anticipating commencing on site in mid-2025. Council should do whatever it can to facilitate this, to bring a crane back into the sky and the economic benefits that such a project brings to Liverpool. This project is a shot in the arm for Liverpool, which will help bring back construction and activity to energise our local economy. As councils, it is our duty to champion transformative projects like this, which have the power to uplift our community, create jobs and foster opportunities for generations to come. And I'd like to move that council reiterate its support for the progression of stage two of Liverpool Civic Place in partnership with Bilt, focusing on delivering commercial building that includes commercial space and other key precinct components. Two, authorise and delegates authority to the acting CEO to progress, facilitate and encourage a commercial rather than a residential development on the site. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. We'll now move into planning and compliance. The first item on the agenda is Plan 01, Milton Grange GCP Amendment Post Exhibition Report, page 84, tab one with recommendation on page 86.
We've got a question on that.
Councillor AJ, do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor Ostevsky.
Yeah, there was...
Just one sec before that. Do you want to speak for your motion, councillor AJ? No? Yes councillor Ostevsky?
So according to this report, there was letters sent out to 880 property owners and a lot of them seem to be putting submissions that don't relate to any of the stuff in this report. Have we written to them individually and explained to them the areas of concern and the fact that even though they have made submissions objecting to the proposal, it doesn't relate to this report here?
I'll prefer that matter to the Director of Planning.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, I'll defer to Luke. I'll stay coordinate of strategic planning for a response.
Thank you. Through the Chair, councillor, no, not yet. But what we do is, once council has made a final decision, we'll write to all submitters explaining the decision that has been made.
Any other further discussion? Councillor Hart, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I would just like to speak in support of this. Now, I've been around for a long time, as you know. This started back in 2012. And you have the issue in Middleton Grange of major traffic problems. Had this progressed back in 2016, 18, thereabouts, we would have eliminated a lot of the problems that we're currently experiencing because that town centre, one of its obligations was to ensure that the traffic around there, the additional construction of roads, laneways, not laneways, slipways joining on to Cow Pasture Road would have been in place. Unfortunately, we did receive some 600 odd objections to it and they were all based on traffic, not necessarily of what the town centre would present to the local population. So I'm glad this has come up, I'm glad that this is going ahead. And as you know, there are construction works happening there right now. And I've spoken to a lot of those people who initially said, no, we don't want it. And the sad thing is, people don't read traffic reports, they make assumptions. And unless you read those traffic reports and you understand them, you get the wrong idea. Which I would say the majority of the people who objected to that Middleton Town Grange Centre is they got the wrong idea of what was happening there. So I'm glad this is happening now and hopefully it'll solve some of the traffic problems that we're currently experiencing. My only concern is, I wish we would get a move, not want to say we, I wish the government would get a move on with the M7 underpass because that's the other bottleneck that needs to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is Plan 02, Liverpool Local Traffic Community Charter Update, page 98, tab two with recommendation on page 98. Move councillor, move deputy mayor?
Move the recommendation.
Seconded?
I'm happy to second. I just want to add a point three. I think it won't be too controversial. So the recommendation, and we'll add another point, please. Point two? To direct the CEO to create a register tracking recommendations from the Liverpool Local Traffic Committee with updates on the status and timeline of each project, which is presented quarterly to a governance committee meeting. With updates on the status and timeline of each project. Deputy Mayor, are you happy with that change?
I'm happy, yes, that's...
I just want to make sure you're the mover.
That's a good question. Can I approve that if I'm the mover? I can. Okay, I'm happy with that. But there is probably one question we need to ask, is that able to be done? Thank you, thank you, Dean. Any other additions to that comment? And I'm not going to speak for the motion.
I'll just speak for my part. I suppose, Deputy Mayor, I think it might make it easier for us councillors if we get a tracking list so we can see the status for each project, you know, whether they're waiting for funding, whether they've got a grant for a project if it's in the Capital Works Programme. Whatever that status is will be great to know and so we can keep track of all the little changes and fantastic and important work that the Liverpool Local Traffic Committee does for us.
Any objections? No? No objections then, it's passed unanimous, so it's moved.
Move the motion.
Move the motion. To vote for it, all in favour? As I said, there's no objection, so they're all in favour. Thank you. That's Plan 02, Plan 03. Next one is Plan 03.
Got a couple of questions.
I will let the mayor take over again.
Nice, sorry. Do we have a mover of the motion?
I'll move it with a slight amendment, if I can. Instead of...
Well, he hasn't, he's got to add, he's making amendment, moving a motion with some changes to the recommendation.
As per the book, but instead of 15 metres, 20 metres.
Just refer to the CEO before we get a seconder, whether...
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I think there was an updated recommendation that was sent out.
Yeah, is that the right, is that the latest one?
It was in a memo, from what I understand.
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the latest one.
Yeah.
It was a memo that went out. Can we just, can we come back to this at the end of the agenda while we get the recommendation up? Is everyone happy with that? All right, so I'll move that, it just be... We'll put this back at the, we'll come back to this at the end of the meeting. Okay, Plan 04, Planning Proposal Heritage Listing for Lot 17 Leacock Lane, page 139 with the recommendation on page 140.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNaught, seconded councillor Green. Any discussion?
Who's, who will be responsible for the maintenance of the property, considering that the buildings are deteriorating?
I refer to the CEO.
I think the short answer is council. No? Oh, the property owner, okay, the property owner.
Any other further discussion? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Declare unanimous. Next item is Plan 05, Status of Planning Agreements Under Negotiation with Council, page 145, tab five with recommendation page 146, councillor McNaught.
Happy to move that way.
Just got a question.
Do you have a seconder, councillor Moon? Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Just one sec. Do you want to speak for your motion councillor?
No, just wanted to say thank you for the update and that I am pleased to see that it will continue to come to the governance committee for continual updates.
Right, yeah. Councillor Ostevsky, your question?
Yeah, there's three voluntary planning agreements there on page 149, but I couldn't find anywhere in the book or the attachments, I may have missed them, what they are about. It'd be nice to get a bit of background.
Yes, CEO?
And after the director.
We'll provide, we'll circulate some further information in relation to each of those three items. I can give you a quick 30-second briefing on each now, if you like. Okay, sure. So the first one, VPA 39, is a voluntary planning agreement under negotiation between council and Fraser's Property Group for the Edge Square Town Centre site. This is a longstanding negotiation. It relates to a state-approved precinct plan and we are progressing quite swiftly with the negotiations and aim to bring a VPA to council for endorsement in the first quarter of next year. It effectively seeks to formalise the infrastructure delivered by Fraser's as part of the town centre. A lot of it has already been built. That includes mainly roads and traffic infrastructure provisions. And there will be contributions in some form relating to other infrastructure, including social infrastructure, mainly in relation to a community facility. So we are under negotiation. There'll be some land swaps and land dedication components to this. It's a significant VPA and early in the new year, we'll come to council with a briefing on that. For number two, which is VPA 45, that's for the Landcom-owned component of Edmiston Park, which is adjacent to and around the town centre precinct. It is a VPA in conjunction with also a state-approved, not yet approved, but a state-assessed precinct plan amendment that seeks to increase the yield. I don't recall the exact numbers, but it will take us from a few hundred to somewhere around the 3,000 mark in terms of dwelling yield. And the Department of Planning is waiting on council to agree on a VPA with Landcom to be able to finalise the precinct plan. The department are supporting council in the negotiations and effectively, we're working through a similar process to that with Fraser's. But this has been a better negotiating sort of process because the department has been actively involved in that and it effectively seeks to capture the infrastructure that would be provided with that uplift in density. The last one is VPA 59 and that is in association with the DA that's been lodged with council fairly recently. And the DA seeks to stage residential subdivision of a property and the property is adjacent to the George's River and there is some RE1 land encompassed within that property. And effectively, we're in the very early stages of negotiation where the proponent is seeking to provide some amenity-type benefits to encourage activation along the river in exchange for a staged subdivision outcome. That's very early in the negotiation piece. And again, we'll be coming to council with some advice on how that negotiation is progressing.
Any other further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is Plan zero six. Financial status of council contributions plans, page one seventy five, tab six, recommendation on page one hundred and seventy five. Move councillor Moon. Second councillor AJ. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. We've been working on, or we've been seeking this sort of information for quite a while now and I thank staff for the report that has come to us and I'm happy to, to accept the report. But I wonder if at a briefing session or a workshop, we might dig a little bit deeper into the report to have some just discussion around it because a lot more detail has come than we have received before. And there might be, there's no questions I need to ask now, but I would like to have the opportunity to dig a bit deeper into that at a briefing session. So if we could add that as a point, perhaps that was discussed at a briefing session in the new year.
Yep.
Please, thank you.
Is the mover happy to add that?
Just a quick one, page eighty three talks about risk, I just want a bit of clarification on that. Yeah, one eighty three, page one eighty three. Risk is deemed to be high, the ongoing funding shortfall highlighted and council's enforced contributions will continue to widen placing financial and asset delivery risk onto council, reputational risk to our growing communities. It's outside council's risk appetite, can we just get some clarification on that and how we're going to be managing that?
Refer that to the director of planning.
Thank you through the acting CEO. What this is saying is that the risk will be high if we don't progress with a reform plan or programme and what this seeks to do is address some of those significant gaps. So the longer it takes for us to expend contributions, the more, the wider that gap will be between the cash that we hold and the cost of acquisition slash contributions related infrastructure works.
Look, the, just. And thank you very much for the, for the report. Ideally, what we were still after is understanding, once again, you know, the cash balances that we hold in every contribution plan and the specific items that are supposed to be funded in each of those plans. And whilst this report has some information, I'm I've actually missed that part, but when we have that briefing session, can we have that detail broken up? Please?
Through the acting CEO, yes, most definitely, we can, happy to brief you and talk you through the plans, which are quite vast in the information that they hold. So some have enough information for us to progress and carry out the works. Some contributions plans actually don't have the specific projects. The detail of those specific projects, so we need to have that information on hand and after that we'd be able to move forward, we've got the cash available, but some of them just require quite specific project briefs. As an example, it would be a community facility in an established area, but there's no actual detail in that contribution plan, which are very historical plans that gives us an information to be able to advise on what needs to be built. So this is the opportunity, this is where we have now opportunities to use that flexibility because of the high level information in those plans to determine what we want in some of those areas. And some other contributions plans are quite specific in what needs to be built or, for example, there's the seven million dollars for the trees. It's so specific that the names of the streets are identified, so it's about understanding what we want to keep, that's very specific and also what we want to see being delivered in those CPs where the info is not so specific. So I think it's a great idea, happy to brief and workshop you all on this.
Look, in considering, as councillor Sevci pointed out, the comments on page one eighty three, that the risk is deemed to be high, I think it's important that, I think we have a responsibility as a governing body to keep a governance oversight to ensure that we at least, you know, do what we can to lower that risk. In the. So we need to resolve, I would say, an extra point. I'm just trying to think what is the best mechanism to deal with that, councillor Green?
Isn't the risk though is linked to if we don't proceed with the project to reform the planning framework? So it would suggest that if you have that following workshop to hopefully to pass this today and then follow it up with a workshop and then do that deep dive. And so that, you know, that reform process can start. If we don't start, isn't that, I'm just getting clarification, if we, if we decided not to proceed, then that, the risk will be high and it will continue on to cause a huge, a bigger headache.
So, and I think then it's a matter of, well, okay, if that process has started, well, what oversight and governance do we have over that process to ensure that it does continue moving? So I think we need to at least get updates on it regularly to ensure, yeah, as a standing agenda item.
So possibly a quarterly report maybe?
CEO was just saying we probably should discuss it with Eric as well. So maybe we'd put in there, you know, receives what a quarterly or discusses, makes as a standing item on the governance committee and raise the matter with Eric. And don't worry about the quarterly report, can remove that part. Microphone please councillor.
So basically it'll be a monthly thing instead of quarterly?
It's at the governance committees, yeah, so we'll talk about it there. Now we just have to get the right, the, are the mover and second are happy with that? Alright. We just have to change those first two words, it is a council, it is a standing item, that council has as a standing item, lovely, thank you. Has has a standing item on the governance committee. A report on contributions. Here I am, trying to think of. Report on contributions and. I think we keep it vague, keep it vague, I think it sums up. They're being prescriptive, I think the objective is. Yeah. So mover and second happy, everyone in discussion?
Yep.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is COM zero one. Report back to council, Edmondson Park residents advisor group, page one ninety seven, tab seven, recommendation on page one ninety seven. I'm happy to move this with adopting option two.
I have a foreshadowed motion.
If I have a seconder? Second to councillor McNaught. Councillor Sevci, yes, your foreshadowed motion.
We adopt option one.
Do you have a seconder? Second to councillor Carnaby. In moving the motion, I'll just say that yes, whilst the speaker pointed out today, Miss Angelovick, it has been a long time coming and this is about providing, delivering the parks that should have been delivered and making sure that there is a a focus on delivering the park so the community is wanting and getting it done because we can't let it linger on as it has been lingering on and not have the urgency. Even though I know many councillors have expressed urgency repeatedly to get it done. But ultimately the residents expressed to me that, yeah, they would, you know, they want to be around the table so we can actually move these items along because they haven't moved to the speed that they should have. So hence why I recommend option two. Any other speakers for the motion, councillor McNaught?
Happy to speak for it. Look, I thank staff for the multiple ways that we attempt to engage community. And this is quite a specific issue that the community has brought to us that's important and and I welcome any way that we can get better engagement with residents who are affected by the decisions that we make, so I'm happy to support option two.
Any other speakers for the motion?
Against?
Yes councillor.
The reason I, I'm looking at option one, I think it's a more inclusive option and it's probably recommended in the report, if you look at it. It says if we create a group as per option two, we would need a budget to cover staff overtime, venue hire, admin costs, there's duplication of services. I mean, we're all in agreements that we all want to see this progress and I think we need to work with the option available to us and we do have delegated drop in sessions twice a year, maybe we can increase them. And as you know, we have budgetary constraints and option two will put pressure on that as well.
Councillor Carnaby?
Yeah, look, just briefly, I think that whilst.
Sorry, speaking for or against?
I'm speaking for the, for the foreshadowed motion.
We're not dealing with the foreshadowed motion yet, so you can speak.
Speak against the original motion. In terms of the cost associated with establishing an advisory group, it's certainly my reading of the considerations factored in, particularly the risk, that there is a risk that establishing this group will raise community expectations to establish similar groups for other locations within Liverpool. And whilst, of course, our paramount concern is to implement some measures to be able to adequately bring concerns and not cause delay in certain, in certain, in certain projects like Mr Renjelkovic raised earlier, I think that there are options, there are those drop in sessions that we've attended, there are those community sessions that occur, perhaps one of those in that particular area as opposed to a dedicated advisory group would be my view at this point.
The. Any other speakers for or against? Can we just get clarification, is the cost that people referring to, councils are referring to?
Well, clearly option two is costed at five thousand dollars, I'll ask the director of community and lifestyle to advise you to any cost to option one. Option, yeah, option one.
Option, yeah, I guess the option two, because option one I think is saying you're doing it within existing resources, but option two is five thousand, what's that, per meeting or per?
Thank you, through the CEO, we were trying to quantify a cost based on if the councillors wish these sessions to go in the night time. So it was, so we equated for about five thousand based on ACC, the Aboriginal Consulting Committee and other committees that we run in the evening, that would be the indicative cost across the sessions.
Per, per year?
Per year.
Per year. I'll just write a reply. You know, I go back to when we, when council, many, many, many years ago, built the skate park down in Ubud Road in Ernie Smith, that was part of the community there, I think I was seventeen, eighteen years old at the time, we did it, we delivered it and then we finished up, moved on. Five thousand dollars, I don't think it's a, it's a very small amount of money considering our budget, but the community wants this, they want to get this park done and it's, I recommend, people want to, people want to, yeah, listen, talk to the community, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Can I just make an additional point, Mr Mayor, that we, I believe in the last meeting or the meeting before, we actually reduced our community committees by one that did run after hours. So that there would be potentially the budget available there from the companion animal committee that we no longer hold, just a consideration.
And on that as well, if we, through, through the mayor councillor Rostevsky, you mentioned that we could potentially do you know, more drop in sessions, I assume that would cost a lot of money as well in terms of staff overtime, given you probably would have more staff there too, so that might, you know, even though option one says it won't really cost much, if, if that's what you're seeking councillor Rostevsky, I think it might in reality, in the long term, actually be worse financially.
I just want to clarify that, I think, yes, that is one aspect, but option one is more inclusive. It is available to everyone when we do that drop in session, it's, option two is more of a an advisory group which is probably closed off to everyone. Considering that and the background information that we do currently has appointed, council has appointed a community engagement officer and is doing this work, we're going to be duplicating the services by undertaking option two.
Thank you for everyone for jumping in after I had my write of reply, I'm glad that everyone decided to speak, so. All good, I'll put the, I'll put the motion for option two, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against. I declare the motion lost, call a division. All those in favour, please stand. Those against? We'll now deal with the foreshadowed motion. Councillor Sevci, would you like to speak for your motion? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, councillor, deputy mayor?
I'm very aware of these changes now, having advocated for the community forums and those community forums have been replaced by these. Option one basically, and I remember the one that we had at Edmondson Park a few years ago. It actually attracted a lot of people, I think there were only two councillors that came to it. Where if, where what we could do with, with this particular one, this particular issue, you put the item on the agenda for that particular meeting, I think it's twice a year and you could say in this case for the people at Edmondson Park, this is the issue you want to address and I'm sure that's what you could do, you would have the necessary people, council staff would be there to, to give the advice, so you could tailor those community forums to the issues that exist at the time, that's just my point of view.
Any other speakers?
So in.
Councillor AJ?
Oh, sorry, to the mayor and to the. In considering there is, what will be the cost of joining the community and the staff to be there? They can give us update on that.
I'll ask the director of community and lifestyle to advise.
Thank you through the acting CEO, so to clarify, you want the cost of the existing mechanism? Yeah, that's within, if that's the case, that's within the operating budget. We have an engagement officer that leads this work on path of council who's already as part of our council establishment and then the costs associated with the overtime and the additional staff that are present are all costed to the engagement office in the civic and executive services team, which is budgeted currently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers for or against? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against. Declare the motion carried. Next item is COM zero two. Annual contribution to South West Sydney Academy of Sport, page two oh one, tab eight, with the recommendation on page two hundred and two.
I'm happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor Monahan?
Happy to second.
Second to councillor Hart?
Just a quick question, if I can.
Go for it.
I noticed on page two oh four Liverpool is contributing more than all the other councils, do we know why?
I'll ask the director of community and lifestyle, they've got some ice on that. I'll ask the director of community last time, he's got some ice on that.
Councillors, this is a legacy item that I'd have to take on notice on the question why. But I do note that council have contributed this amount of funding for, since the inception. And that goes back, if you look on page, page 201, from 2015.
Any other further discussion? No. I will.
I just was wondering if we, might this be able to be deferred till we get that information? Because I'm just wondering, unless it's a, it's a, an urgent issue or unless, you know, we have to do that. I just wonder why, as a growth council, why, you know, would they, why can't we be on the same level as Campbelltown and Wallandilly?
Through the acting CEO, that's fine. There's no urgency on this. We just want to get some confirmation that council were committed to the ongoing benefit. I can confirm that we have 33, close to the 33, a little bit less under in our budget. However, I think that's a good strategy in terms of confirming interfering.
So does there need to be an amendment?
The mover and second are happy to change to.
I am happy with that course of action.
To defer it. Second, yep.
Do we need to, yeah, do we need to add that pending the answer to the question?
Okay, the mover and second are happy with that.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is COM 03, grants, donations and community sponsorship.
Got a motion.
Page 209, tab nine with recommendation on page 209. Just one moment while councillor Hart. Just a moment till councillor Hart. Yes councillor Rostewski, your motion?
Oh, just in a second, I just wanted to get some clarification. Firstly, a great option, giving us the background information on a lot of these grants, it's the first time that it's happened and it's, it's very, very helpful. And I normally wouldn't sort of go into it in much detail these days, but there's some items in the, in the agenda there about budget constraints. And, you know, there's an organisation in there that, you know, it's got hundreds of millions of dollars worth of assets, turns over nearly 100 million in, in funding, sorry, in turnover and asking for funding from council. Actually, there's two there and I don't think it would be prudent that we use this money considering our cash reserves are near zero. And there's another one in there for the scrap schools. Now, I can't read the attachments in the booklet, but there's an item in there, they're seeking funding for project management and accounting to the tune of $6,000. So, I mean, I don't know if these things should be funded from council. But furthermore, the planting seeds organisation is seeking funding of $5,000, of which 3,600 goes towards education sessions. Now, doesn't tell us what that is, but it looks like it's someone's wages. You know, if it's a not-for-profit, you know, I think people should be donating their time. And I also see quotes in there for accounting and project management and admin fees paying $40 an hour. Furthermore, the organisation is based out of Bellevue Hill. Now, I don't have a problem with donating plants and all that kind of things, but money from the community going towards admin costs, I have a real issue with. In particular, that organisation makes a very healthy profit. And looking at their P and Ls, the majority of their expenses go towards wages. And there's a generic item in there called general services for, I don't know if I can say the number, but it's quite, quite large. So I'm very uncomfortable with that. Now, a lot of these organisations that do come before us for grants, they will get their grants scrutinised and they need to stand up to the pub test. Now, ratepayers at the moment are in a very difficult situation. So my motion is, as per the book, however, remove Scalabrine Village, Thomas Hassel, remove them. Scrap schools, make that 2,500, planting seeds, make that 2,500.
Do you have a seconder? Second at councillor Carnaby. Councillor McNamara. Sorry councillor Sev, your microphone.
I just have a question. You know, this, this kind of information comes to us monthly and we, you know, it's not the, it's not the first time it's been printed, you know what I mean? So these grants have gone through a rigorous council process with staff that we are not involved with, which I'm pleased about. And we get the report that comes to us. So I'm wondering about the, I suppose, I'm wondering about the process of changing on the fly, these kind of things when we don't, we don't get involved in that process. I'm just asking a question about the governance around that and whether or not, you know, we should. Whether it should be altered or just not supported at all with further information to come, I'm not sure. I feel like, I know that there is quite a rigorous process behind these recommendations that come to us. So I'm just a little bit unsure about changing them for reasons that we haven't, I'm not saying that they're not correct, but I haven't been involved in the background to that. And it's certainly not my expertise as a councillor when the staff have brought a report through a rigorous process.
Well, ultimately councillor, it's a decision for council. The staff can make the recommendations. The recommendation is made based upon the policies that are adopted, the procedures. So we have a whole list of grants. And I think ultimately if councillors, considering our role is a governance and oversight and policymaking role, then you should be changing the policy so people, because if people, let me say, well, hold on, I've ticked every box according to the policy. You know, you've been, you know, it's transparent, it's out there, but then you have a different policy that you make decisions upon. Well, that policy should reflect, the decision, the policy should reflect council's internal or whatever councillors here, councillor Rostewski has said, so.
What can we add on that? As per the mayor said, maybe review the policy because there are things that we need to put out there that I'm certainly not comfortable with funding. So maybe we review the policy and come back at the earliest available council meeting.
So the policy has been reviewed numerous times in recent, in the last couple of years. It's done that, but what exactly do you want? So you don't want to give the money to Thomas Hassel? Why not?
Well, as I mentioned, I don't know if we can, because there's an attachment to this, if it's confidential, but looking at their P and Ls, you know, Thomas Hassel turns over $38 million and it's got $100 million in assets, Scalabrine Village.
Okay, so once again, so is it basically, so they turn over too much money? They have too many assets for a grant?
They're asking funding from us and they're not putting in a co-contribution firstly. I probably would have felt more comfortable if they put their hand in their pocket and done a co-contribution.
So you want to change a policy with it, so there's a co-contribution?
Look, it's, I'm still not comfortable giving an organisation that size money unless there is a majority co-contribution by them. And also I'm not comfortable funding for things like admin costs and, you know, accounting fees and wages. I'm not comfortable with, with funding that information.
So can you just step that out? Because reviewing the policy is one thing, but I said the policy's been reviewed numerous times, in recent times.
Maybe exclude funding for admin costs, wages and any organisation that is of a certain size, I haven't determined what, what number that would be, would have to do a co-contribution.
Hmm, all right, well, you want to choose a number so we can, you want staff to choose a number?
Probably better they come back with a number.
Yeah. And when you mean by wages, would that mean then for someone who's having an event and has security there? You would, would that be part of wages even though they're contractor and cleaners?
Well, admin costs, there's one in there for accounting, there's one in there for, let me find it. Well, I read the report thoroughly.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean wages. So what's your definition of wages?
Basically, if funding can only be towards, I guess, material items. Most of these organisations are an organisation, people volunteer their time, like we have, we have Liverpool Olympic here tonight and a lot of their guys, their coaches and staff volunteer their time. So they don't get paid for it. So I'm thinking it's a bit odd to get a lot of these organisations coming to us saying, can you pay our wages?
So I just get clarification with the CEO with regards to admin?
I've just been advised to, Mr Mayor, that admin costs are excluded in the assessment. So we don't pay for admin costs.
Items listed in there as admin costs.
Yeah, so through the mayor, can I?
Yep, go for it, then I'll go to councillor Green.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is this like operational matters and then if the staff can come back and, and just give us like how the process works? Because if somebody applied for a grant and their grant has been approved, basically there'll be, how they're gonna spend their money? And that report will come back to council and we can have a look at it and say, okay, maybe this grant that we approved, they waste money here, they waste money there, and let's review it. Yeah, they have to, okay. So then if it's operational matters, then I think that we should get more clarifications on that from the operation.
Yep, councillor Green.
I can understand some of the points that councillor Rostewski is making. But I guess overriding that, people have applied under a particular criteria. I think that what this raises is that there are some issues, there may be some contexts where it is more appropriate that an application be a matching grant rather than a grant for the whole where there are particular, you know, in terms of particular contexts in which that is appropriate. And that's why I think that we do need to have a look at the, I know that, I mean, I, I can't recall having a look at it last term, the grants, did we?
Yep. I think, I think, I think twice even maybe, twice, three times, three times.
Let's revisit it again. We've got new councillors on board, maybe there's some different ideas. You know, I guess it's, it's a conversation worth having so that, you know, that anomalies are not, that we can, you know, that we can eliminate anomalies. I'd feel more comfortable with that, but I understand what the, the issue is. But given that people have fulfilled the criteria as it was at that time, I guess we've got to look at it through an ethical lens as to what is the ethical thing to do.
Yep, thank you councillor McNamara.
I have a foreshadowed motion, which is as per the book with a point two that the community grants and sponsorship policy, sorry, grants, donations and community sponsorship policy come to a governance committee meeting for review and discussion in 2025.
Just before, do you have a seconder? I just want to, second at councillor Green, just want to refer to that to see, when was the last time this came? And how long, how many times has this policy been reviewed? And I say came to a governance or a briefing?
I refer that to the director of committee last time.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we brought this to the first governance meeting of your term, which was back.
Sorry, sorry, excuse me councillors, the director is answering your question.
Councillors, thank you. Through the acting CEO, we brought this policy to the first governance meeting of the year since your term, sorry, of your term, which I believe was in the November, November governance meeting. It was brought to the council on a number of requests by yourselves in terms of inducting into the policy. So this was brought to November. I can clarify for councillor Rostewski, the admin costs are not part of the, are part of the broader application, but not part of the funding that we, we, we place for the council. So that's taken off the funding. And that's why you've got some anomalies around 8,600 because admins excluded. We only fund that though, those, the elements that are within our policy. So, but I'm happy to bring this to another governance and get further clarity.
Sorry, just a quick question for the CEO and mayor. You do fund wages?
No. So the detail within the, the detail that we've provided, and look, there could be an error and I can't clarify, but I can point over that, that wages are not included. It's all the complete project cost and the summary of the project cost is provided to the councillors as per, as what you requested. And it may be confusing in what part we are funding and what part the, the organisation is funding. But the policy is very clear in that we don't fund staff or admin costs.
All right. So of that being the case, so that means as your point three councillor Rostewski, so if we just go back there. So admin is not already, is not funded, so wage is in there. So you, we're free, remove them because the superfluous.
Look, I'm happy to amend my motion, but just excluding Thomas Hassel and the Scalabrine Village as per the book.
So you don't want, so does that mean you don't want to?
Except Scalabrine and Thomas Hassel.
Okay.
As per recommendation.
So no Thomas Hassel and no Scalabrine Village. So, once again, so do you still want to review? Go back to your point three, do you still want to do point three? Sorry, microphone please.
We need to look at the size of these organisations. Maybe let's not do it on the fly today, but come back to a discussion at the next meeting.
So just, so say now you want to put in, you would like the staff to look at, bearing in mind that it's been reviewed three times and we've had briefings about this at our first council meeting. And bearing in mind, there is a cost, can I, does this take up time and is there, do we quantify with that time to, to review these policies and bring up reports to council? To the CEO?
Well, the time will be made up in, in day, like the normal daytime.
Yeah. So once again, so we can probably, so you want to put a limit on the size of the organisation that receive, that can apply for grants? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. Yeah. And I think the community will be comfortable with funding organisations of that size, considering we've got an item here called COF05, which is quite serious talking about our budget. And we probably should have spoken about that at the start of the meeting, but it will come to light once we get to that budget item number.
Okay, so, and is your size based on turnover or based on assets?
Both.
So, okay. And, okay, I just don't know, you know, if, if the staff came back with a $10 million limit of turnover, would you be happy with that?
Well, I don't think today's the time for it because, you know, obviously we've only got five hours and we don't want to go into a second meeting like last time. I think we should bench the, the size at an appropriate governance meeting.
Okay, well, that's different if you wanted to go to a governance meeting. I, I guess once again, the staff have had reviewed this policy three times and the request of councillors. If you want to put in, it'd be good if you help give them a ballpark of regarding what you think.
I think the reason, the reason we need to review it again is the first time it's come up that our cash unrestricted reserves is zero. Now, the situation we find ourselves in, we're required to review this. It's financially prudent to, to put that into play.
So then you would, to do that, then you'd want to remove, you'd look at the total budget with regards to the size of the grants and donations policy, which is, what is it, it's annually was it four or 500,000? Yeah, four, four seven seven, so you'd wanna reduce that number, so if you wanna reduce that number, that's, that would achieve what you're talking about?
I don't wanna do that, I'm just saying that we need to be prudent with what's left in the kitty, considering that we gave, and I supported this, we gave twenty thousand to Lebanon last council meeting, um, that's obviously taken away from a lot of the local organisations that can apply, so we need to be prudent who gets the balance of funding now. Those two organisations are financially capable to be able to fund these projects and, you know, the P C Y C and a lot of the smaller organisations that I see up there could require more funding going forward.
Okay, so the school, so basically you're saying schools, private schools shouldn't receive any funding, because every, every private school has assets and significant turnover, as do aged care facilities, and probably the P C Y C has a pretty big balance sheet and turnover and assets as well in the hundreds of millions of dollars. I just wanna save staff's time.
Well, we could debate this at the, uh, governance meeting and, uh, we don't need to talk about it today, and we can, um, throw away some numbers and, and come to a conclusion then, I, I don't think the public wanna be watching this, uh, tool and throwing between numbers and, and whatnot, we need to get consensus on it and, uh, give people some time to prepare.
Yeah, well, I think actually the public would like to see, because Thomas Hassel would like to know why they wouldn't be getting, why they're not gonna get the funding, as with Scalabrine, and we're just trying to get some policy framework around it so we can be consistent, because if you're talking about turnover and assets, P C Y C and Liv, has similar to those two organisations. So we need to be consistent and clear with our community, why?
Well, why, have a look at C O F zero five.
Yes, you mentioned that, so therefore-
Zero cash in the bank.
If you wanna have any, if you wanna have councillor Restevsky, if you wanna have an impact on that, then you, what your role as a councillor is to reduce the grants and donations budget, because you're still gonna, you still have budgeted four hundred and, or thousand dollars to hand away, so whether, you're just saying is you wanna hand it out to different people, that doesn't affect conf, uh, the item that you're referring to. So if you wanna reduce that, reduce that, that's how you would deal with that item. Count, deputy mayor?
Look, I, I would just like to say this, if we're going to review this, at the review, one of the options I would suggest that this is, that we give donations to not-for-profit organisations, and the two organisations we're talking about are both for profit. So, you know, I find, and we didn't debate this in the reviews that I remember and that any of those discussions, so as far as I'm concerned, as a councillor and as a rate payer, I object to giving funding to corporations that are making multi-million dollar profits, and we're talking, and this is the first time that we as councillors have actually seen the, that information that councillor Rostewski has asked for, had I seen that information in previous grants and donations, I would have had second thoughts about donating to some of those causes. Now, I think, well, that's my point of view, and I think that is better discussed at a review of these, whether you call it a governance committee or a special workshop on this issue, but it needs to be discussed, so we're very clear as to who do we donate to, what are the conditions, whether they have to do part, uh, you know, matching grants, and I know we've got several policies on that, but you know, they tend to cloud from one to the other, so I think we need some clear guidelines. At the moment, I would suggest we leave it as it is, because we could be doing and throwing this for ages and not getting anywhere. So I would suggest, I humbly suggest that we leave it as it is, we vote on the issue.
Yep, so thank, thank you, just, just on those points, that the, the CEO has some, uh, points of clarification.
Uh, councillors, I am advised that the, the schools are eligible for, for the sustainable environment grants, which are funded through the environment levy that, uh, council has, uh, and the others have, have to be not-for-profit, uh, unincorporated entities in the charity, uh, field, so.
So the school, the schools are not for profits?
The schools, uh, maybe.
Yeah, the school has, the school, the school has to be a not-for-profit, yeah, they don't operate for, if, if a school is for profit, that means they can't get any government funding, I know we have a, a former director of a school here, so the school, Thomas Hassel, is not a for-profit entity.
It's made a profit of three point nine million dollars.
To the mayor, um, to the ma-
One second, I'll, I'll just refer to the, uh, CEO.
Yeah.
Thank you, Miss Mayor, through the chair, I'd just like to clarify, um, the sustainable environment grants, uh, schools are only eligible for these tests, excuse me, I'll start again, schools are only eligible for the sustainable environment grants, because they are funded through a special environment levy, uh, and it's specific for that purpose, schools, um, so state schools as government entities are not eligible for council grants, being that they are government entities, uh, in the same vein that, um, New South Wales Health organisations, for example, are not eligible for council grants, uh, and private schools are also not eligible for council's other grants for the same reason. Um, however, they are for the sustainable environment grant scheme only, as that's a separate scheme fund. Yes, so the applications for, for Thomas Hassel and the other, um, or the, the school related ones, so Thomas Hassel there, that is a sustainable environment grant that they have applied for, and they are, um, funding rounds throughout the year, separate, run concurrently and as part of our grants programme, but funded through a separate funding pool.
Wonderful, can I just get clarification on Scal, on Scalabrine, if we know, if we know anything?
Scalabrine is a, um, a programme that's being run in, in collaboration with our Community Hubs Australia programme. So Scalabrine is, uh, operating that with alongside a non-for-profit entity as well.
All right, thank you, deputy mayor, do you wanna?
Oh, if, uh, I actually have an urgency motion, but it can wait until you finish with this one.
All right, so we have to see, we have councillor Restevsky's motion, which is talking about, uh, just to clarify, point three, where you wanna send it to a, to review the policy at a governance meeting, was that the, was that the, sorry, we already had something written, councillor Restevsky's motion. If you move up, please, should be, is where's the, oh, there, hold on, yep, there we are, sorry. Uh, okay, so do you want to come back to the council, or do you want it to be discussed in a governance meeting, that's what we have to work out? Governance meeting, thank you. Cool, and are you happy with the wording, councillor Restevsky? Councillor Kenny, but second, are you happy with the wording? Right. Um, okay, we'll now deal, so we'll deal with, uh, the motion, it was by councillor Restevsky, um, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against. I declare the motion, uh, carried, I'll call for a division, all those in favour, please stand. Yep, yep, those, those against? I declare the motion lost, so we'll now deal with the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor McNutt and seconded by councillor, uh, Green, which is the recommendation. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried, call a division, all those in favour? Those against? Thank you. Next item is corp zero.
Could I, sorry?
Oh, yeah, sorry, urgency motion?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, councillor Hart, yes. Welcome back. Yep.
I have, uh, an urgency motion.
What's your urgency motion, councillor?
It is to do with the Luddinham Show. It's being delivered in the first weekend in March, first to the second March, twenty twenty five. An event organisers are finalising the show for, scheduled for twenty twenty five. That is dependent on financial contributions from council and other sponsors. Uh, the deadline for the event organisers to finalise all necessary arrangements, including supply agreement and printed promotional material is imminent, if council waits for a report to be presented to the February meeting, twenty twenty five, will miss the deadlines for inclusion in marketing material, programmes, et cetera, and that will impact on the ability of organisers to finalise the arrangements. So the motion is, uh, one, acknowledge the value of the Luddinham Show in servicing the regional communities within the Liverpool L G A, and two, support the request for sponsorship from Luddinham Show for the value of six thousand dollars, excluding J S T, to come from council's community grants and donations programme.
Okay, so why, why is it urgent to clarify, simple terms?
If, if, if there's a report required on the twenty fifth, it'll, twenty fifth of Feb, well then, sorry, in February twenty twenty five, and it'll be too late by that time, so in other words, they'll miss the deadline for publication and so on.
All right, I'll happy to accept that as a, as, as a urgency. So the motion. Yes, I think the, their apologies to, okay. Do you have a second, that? Yeah, second councillor, um, Monaghan. Uh, any further discussion?
I just have a question.
So just before, councillor, do you wanna speak for your motion first?
Yes, I'm ha, yes, I'm happy to do that. Uh, I'll read this, this will make more sense than I understand, anyway. Luddinham Show is an annual event delivered at Luddinham Showground. The event attracts several thousand attendees across its two days, and it's the only significant local event delivered in council to support the rural community in Liverpool. The resolution proposes that council continues its financial commitment from twenty twenty four to ensure that the event is able to continue. Should be noted that this is a sponsorship agreement, not a donation, and as such, Liverpool will be acknowledged as a sponsor across all print and digital media. We've been doing this for many years, and sadly, it doesn't quite go along with the grants programme, and hence it requires a notice of motion every time. And the reason for that is they act, they charge an admission fee, and that's the problem. Because they charge the admission fee, I don't know whether you consider that a profit, considering what we were just talking about, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, councillor McNutt.
Um, thank you, and firstly, if I can say, huge fan of the Luddinham Show, everybody should get along there, it's an awesome event. Um, and the organisers do a fantastic job. Just based on the discussion that we just had, I just wonder whether or not we actually do receive some sort of, um, financials and information regarding, you know, previous shows or something, just to back up our decision to, to, um, sponsor, yeah, like, you know, usually we have a sponsorship pack or something like that, is there, is there that kind of information available that, that staff can look at?
Uh, would you like me to, through the acting CEO, a, a couple of considerations here and to answer your questions. Firstly, uh, this particular, Luddinham Show always places an application to council under the grants programme and is knocked back, and there are a couple of reasons for that in terms of the criteria placement. Number one, they don't fall in the Liverpool L G A, um, they're in the Penrith Council, however, one could argue that, um, many of the patrons that attend the show would fall into Liverpool, but, um, from a criteria perspective, they are outside of the L G A. The second element is what councillor, deputy mayor Hall has already noted in regards to, uh, the entry fees, and again, under our current policy provisions, they do not meet the criteria. Um, however, council through resolution have passed previous, uh, grants for the organisation, and I would have to confirm through Jackie, um, who's here, whether they then placed an audited statement, which is, is, is what we will do with the, the programmes that we fund, um, normally, um, an audited report comes back to council, um, that, um, showcases the amount spent and ensure that it's legitimacy, but in terms of the ones that are outside of policy, I'll just confirm with Jackie. Thank you, Tina, through the chair, uh, no, they are not typically, those that are funded outside of policy are not typically, uh, held to the same acquittal, um, requirements as those that are within the grants and donations policy.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll just say that, that yes, I, I think the Luddinham Show is fantastic, and they've been up to, they're over a hundred years, a hun, over a hundred shows they've done so far? Was it one fifty? It's a lot of shows, yeah, so, uh, yep, so, uh, we definitely should be supporting, wonderful, um, great, all right, I'll, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous, uh, we'll now call a recess and get back here at four o'clock, thank you. Could I please ask everyone to return to their seats? Councillor, I'd like to move two items, uh, forward, or one of them is going back to Plan zero three, the minimum, uh, lot size for dual aux, and also, um, subject, there'd be no, no discussion about it, uh, conf zero three, the compulsory addition of one fifty five, Fourth Avenue, Austro. Uh, seconded councillor Moon, yeah, on the favour, against, declare carried. Okay, we'll move now to Plan zero three, page one twenty six, uh, tab three. The recommendation is not on page one twenty eight.
No.
The recommendation has been circulated, and can we just confirm that, that is the right recommendation? The recommendation is on the screen and has been emailed to councillors, so moved councillor, uh, Moon, do you have a second there? Councillor McNutt? I'm happy to give councillors a moment, just to have a, just to make sure they're just, just what they call it, with regards, can we just get a bit of a, uh, because, especially for those who are online as well, can we just get an explanation of what's been, uh, the updated recommendation, what it is, please, through the CEO? Councillor Moon, microphone, please.
Through the acting CEO, I am David Leucosta, coordinator of strategic planning to respond.
Thank you, through the chair, so, uh, as was raised in the briefing session with the councillors, uh, there are some, uh, areas within the L E P that, um, has owned R two low density but have a minimum lot size greater than three hundred square metres. The vast majority of R two land has a minimum lot size of three hundred, however, there is some that has a larger lot size control, minimum lot size control, um, so as the memo explained, that was circulated on Friday, the logic of doubling a three hundred square metre minimum lot size for dual occupancies up to six hundred, that logic should also carry over to those areas where minimum lot size is greater than three hundred, so, for instance, in Voyager Point, there's a minimum lot size of four hundred square metres, therefore you would need an eight hundred square metre site to build two dwellings on one lot, which is what a dual occupancy is.
Yeah, thank you, was there any, just on that, was there, you know, we also discussed about maybe having a smaller lot size in certain areas, was that, uh, looked into? Or how that could be done?
Yeah, so through the chair, uh, that was looked at, um, but as per the report and the logic put forward in the report, um, there wasn't a suggestion from council staff that that should occur. Uh, under the L E P review project, which is currently with the department for a gateway determination, we're proposing a five hundred and fifty square metre minimum lot size in the R three zone. The R three zone is for medium density and is typically located within eight hundred metres of a centre. We believe that density is better placed there, and a six hundred square metre control for dual occupancies is appropriate as the bare minimum for all R two, with those notable exceptions where it might need to be greater in unique places like Voyager Point, Pleasure Point, Warwick Farm.
And just through the CEO, so does this only apply in R two zones?
Correct.
All right, so R three wouldn't, uh, doesn't change whatsoever, okay, thank you. All right, so R3 wouldn't, uh, doesn't change whatsoever. Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes councillor.
Uh, on page 927 of the attachment book B, it says that a community engagement was undertaken. Uh, was the community asked on their opinion on what their thoughts were on the minimum lot width of 15 metres?
Uh, the community wasn't specific, oh, through the chair, sorry. The community wasn't specifically asked in relation to lot width. Um, it was more so in relation to protecting the low scale character of those suburban areas.
Okay, well, um, looking at, uh, the booklet, uh, MECON Residential Lands Investigation says that 15 metres will allow for adequate landscaping, private open space and balanced driveways. I mean, I've looked at the report and I've, I've seen, uh, nothing that takes into account what impact this will have on the local character. Um, I know the community doesn't want suburbs full of dual occupancy developments. Um, and by locking, unlocking 30% of all the R2 zone lands with a 15 metre frontage, you know, this will have a major impact on roads and infrastructure. Now, the changes, uh, in my opinion, take no account on the potential increase in population and impact on traffic, parking and demand for services and facilities like parks, schools and hospitals. And, uh, a lot of the, you know, inquiries I'm getting from residents are, there's, they don't want a lot of these, uh, dual occupancies with, uh, a 15 metre frontage. So I, I'd put a foreshadowed motion if I can with a minimum lot width of 20 metres.
Yep. Do you have a second for that? The motion lapses.
I'll second that.
Second, councillor Monahan? Yep, yep, deputy mayor?
Uh, the question would be, what would be the impact of, of going from, obviously there's going to be, uh, less properties available where you could do that, but what would the overall impact be? How would, how much would that reduce the possibility of having dual OX? Thank you.
Uh, thanks councillor, through the chair. Um, we would have to go away and look at that, um, in terms of the specific number, in, in terms of how many lots that would preclude going from 15 up to 20, um, in terms of the, the typical subdivision widths that we find in the R2 areas. Um, it is worth noting that that would be a more, um, what's the word, uh, a, a, a more strict control than what's currently under the DCP. Um, so the DCP, and it's complicated, it depends on areas from 2008. So there are very complicated provisions in this space. But typically you need between 16 and, uh, 18 metre lot widths to develop in the R2 zone on a 300 square metre lot, um, I'm sorry, on a 600 square metre lot. Um, so it would be actually a little bit more restrictive than what the current DCP, um, puts forward.
Through the acting CEO, just supplementing what Luke's, uh, mentioned. This report has been brought about due to the fact that dual occupancies have become permissible in the R2 zone as a result of state government reform, which is part of a broader suite of initiatives to, um, increase housing supply in, in the state. So, council, um, staff have previously recommended against dual occupancies in the R2 zone because we do offer up different housing typologies that would enable, um, different, um, housing products on smaller lot sizes. However, because of the mandatory dual occupancy, um, uh, development type in the R2 zone, we brought this report up to try and control the quality and the outcomes of dual OX. Now, with increasing the minimum lot size, uh, the minimum lot width, my prediction would be that the department may push back on that because a lot of the existing lots in our established areas wouldn't be able to meet, um, that minimum lot width. So, they may push back on the fact that it may preclude a lot of dual occupancies from actually being built without amalgamation and consolidation. Um, further to that, we can come back to you with any other impacts that are associated with the 20 metre wide minimum lot width requirement.
So, through the CEO, does that mean that the department can still do what it wants, or?
Through the acting CEO, uh, yes, they can, if they see fit, because their prerogative is to ensure, um, ease in the delivery of housing.
Councillor McNamara?
Sorry, so, so I just wanted, I think that the director has answered the question. But, you know, by trying to control what we can of a mandated position, we're trying to work with the state policy in implementing that at a local level this way, yes?
Absolutely.
What about Camden, they're listed as 18 to 22 metres. What, uh, what, through the CEO and, and the mayor, what's your opinion on that one?
Through the acting CEO, um, as I suggested, I can come back to you with some more in-depth, um, variables. However, on face value, and given my knowledge of, um, the makeup of the LGA, there are a lot of lots in established areas that would meet the, um, lot size requirements, but maybe not the lot width. Um, so that would probably be the driving factor, um, for the 15 metre, um, lot width. And that width has been proven to be successful in ensuring, um, planning outcomes that are in, are at an acceptable level. Uh, however, uh, we can do a comparison and benchmarking and also get an understanding of the, um, dynamics within the different suburbs and, um, how much development is precluded when you're moving it from a 15 to a 20 metre lot width. But I don't know specifically why Camden has a different, um, lot width requirement.
I just have a question. Um, it says, uh, in the next steps that DPHI have requested, um, a council endorsed response no later than 14th February 2025. Um, is this a suggestion at the moment to defer this item and then come back with those projections, um, to be discussed at a later date?
I'll refer that to the CEO, or?
Well, that's for council to determine if, um...
I guess if you want the information that deputy mayor is requesting of the impacts, then you would ideally defer it before you resolve.
That, that's what I'm saying, like, will we have ample time if this was deferred to, uh, the next council meeting to have the discussion, make a resolution to respond to DPHI? Do we have that? Is, is, is this something that we have to be resolved now? Or is it something that, um, we can wait with?
I'll ask the director to, uh, planning to answer that question.
Through the acting CEO, I hand over to the coordinator of strategic planning.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, just a couple of points to note probably in this. So, what the department, the Department of Planning, Housing and Environment, DPHI, have asked for is only a minimum lot size control. However, as staff, we've, uh, looked at that and, and seen the need for a lot width control to avoid very narrow yet long blocks being developed and perverse outcomes occurring. There's a chance that the department won't care for our minimum lot width proposal, whether it's 15 or 20 metres, they might reject that. Um, that lot width control is primarily proposed typically through a development control plan, although there are some areas where they're proposed through a local environmental plan as we are proposing as part of this. Um, so I just thought that was some helpful context. In terms of timing, um, it will be challenging to get it back to them in time if it is deferred. Um, there'll be minimal opportunities for us to, to meet with the councillors through a governance committee meeting, for instance, based on the summer break. Um, however, it's probably not impossible. It will also take us some time to look into that, uh, analysis of lot widths. That's a lot more challenging than lot areas, it's just more complicated, um, to do that through our GIS software, but not, again, not impossible, it's something we can do.
Deputy mayor?
However, from what, from, uh, the question is, the chances of, of us succeeding, it sounds like the chances of us succeeding are very, very slim. So to go to all this effort and not win, is it worth it? Because the agenda obviously is, we need to increase the housing density. Whether we want to do that in an R2 zone or not, my personal opinion is no. But then if the opportunity arises, people will take that opportunity to build duplexes in those areas irrespective of what the, the residents locally want. So it's going to happen and depend on the, the state government. So I would suggest that the state government will simply refuse what we want to do.
So I think deputy ma- you, you make a valid point. It's that, uh, as was indicated, they're only asking for a lot size, not a width. We're throwing a lot width in there, right, to kind of give it there. So we're getting a little bit extra. On top of that, we're saying, we want to have some areas that have 800 square metre minimum lot size, right, to once again to sort of, to really preserve those areas. Because it's a big change when you can go and chop up a block of land and, i- if it's already, if the, if the lot size is 400 already. So we risk losing, I think if we go in there with a sensible, yes, we'll give you what you want, but at least give us a, you know, give us a little bit of what we want, we could probably get there versus going too far. And we can risk everything potentially. That's what I'll say at stake. We had the same situation when we did the LEP. You know, yeah, you drop, you can't just drop everything. Okay, we'll drop, here's our rationale, but we're going to compensate by giving you more over here. I think that shows sensibility. So, we have, um, there's no... Yes, through the CEO?
Through the acting CEO, and Luke, correct me if you think there are some procedural issues, but given that the lot width is something within our control, as it would be a DCP provision, my suggestion is that we change perhaps the wording of the, um, recommendation to a lot width varying between 15 and 20 metres, um, subject to further council consideration. So that enables the submission to be sent off, but it also enables us to come back to you as council and look at those provisions within the DCP.
Very good point, I agree. That's what I was gonna say anyway, yeah.
Nice.
All right, um, so... So the mover and second are happy? So the mover and second are happy to had that as part of their motion. And we can remove the foreshadowed motion. Thank you councillor Stevsky, is the second are happy to remove it? Yes, I'm sure they are, all good. All right, no further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declare unanimous. We will now move to, what did I say, Conf? Conf 03, page 218, with the recommendation on 218? No, that's a conf. The speaker spoke about, Mr Habib spoke about that item, but we didn't. Um, it's on the conf booklet, where is it? It's in confidential booklet 3. 21... 2128. Move deputy mayor. Second to councillor McNamara. Move the recommendation, sorry. Just let me know when council's already, yes? Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. Um, how long have we, um, uh, tried to negotiate with the property owners for?
14 years last I heard, but anyway, sorry, I refer to the CEO.
It's, it's detailed in the report, I think it's probably in the order of 10 years. Since 2014.
Long time coming. Yep, any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declare unanimous. Thank you. Well now move back into the order, just give me a moment. So, we were at, we were at Corp 01, page 221, tab 10, with the recommendation on page 221. Move deputy mayor. Second to councillor Green. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare carried. Next item is Corp 02, public inquiry update, page 234, with recommendation on page 230. Happy to move for? Move councillor Hart.
I just have a question.
Councillor McNamara? Yes councillor Hart?
Um, uh, uh, what was the reason we changed, um, legal firms to represent council?
I'll ask the, the acting director of corporate support to answer the question.
Councillor, the team moved from one firm to another and they took the insurer's work with them.
Thank you. Any discussion, further discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, against declare unanimous. Next item is City Futures, CFD 01, Island Park Master Plan, uh, update, page 242, tab 12, with the recommendation on page 243. Move deputy mayor, second to councillor McNamara. Any discussion? I'll, I'll put the motion, just bring in mind, with the Christmas period, I'm sure that's going to be considered with the public exhibition. Yes. Yes. I think, uh, I think the staff would, I think they're pretty, they'll be right. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declare carried. Unanimous. CFD 02, Craig Park. Final master plan and draft plan and management. I haven't seen the word final used in a master plan before. Move deputy mayor, second to councillor Carney. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declare unanimous. I think Mr Habib is involved in that one as well. See what happens when you come to council, all your issues get resolved, huh? Uh, next item is CFD 03, how to expedite the delivery of parks in Austro and Amundson Park, page 272, tab 14, with the recommendation on page 272. Move councillor Moon, second to deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declare unanimous. Next item is CFD 04, tree management framework, tree policy, tree management strategy and tree management technical guidelines. Page 279, tab 15, with the recommendation on page 280. Move councillor Green.
I have a couple of questions.
Secondary, second to councillor Monahan. Uh, councillor, deputy mayor?
Quick, uh, question. I've had, uh, I'm trying to find it, I'll have to think off the cuff.
Uh, I had a couple of questions from residents on the tree management policy. And one of their questions was the report, which is very, very good, most impressive, and I must admit I like it as well. I had previously asked some questions to it and the technical people advised me, councillor, that information will be available at the next council meeting and I must admit I'm impressed, it's a very good job. One of the questions though was, there doesn't appear to be information in there, how a resident can apply to have a tree removed, which is in my way opposite to what we're trying to do, but nonetheless, it isn't in there, uh, maybe we need to look at that. I don't know what.
Yeah. No, it's a, it's a, it's a very valid point that you make, but I'll refer to the C E O and make a comment in a moment.
Thank you, uh, thank you acting C E O and thank you councillor Deputy Mayor for your compliments of the report. I'll ask the coordinator to, uh, who's asking, um, a res who's behind this whole project to answer that question for you.
Through the chair, thank you councillor, um, that information, um, we've developed a flow chart, um, for the residents to understand how they could request for trees to be pruned. So if it's a tree in a council land, they could lodge a request. If it's in a private land, there's a set of, um, steps that they need to, um, identify. That's in the tree management technical guidelines, page number twenty one, which sort of defines, um, the type of trees on which land it's located and, um, how they can apply for the tree to be pruned.
Through the chair, the, 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 uh, information is there. I had, what I had going to ask, how can that be best incorporated into the tree management policy? Obviously whoever's read the report didn't, didn't see that or it didn't stand out. And I must admit that happens to a lot of people, including me. Doesn't matter how many times you read it, you don't necessarily pick that up, but I thank you for that information, thank you.
Can I just ask a question about, um, the, and first of all, I want to say thank you very much for the policy. It is very in depth, I don't think I've talked so much about trees for a long time and it was, it was great. Look, I know that sometimes it's, it's, uh, you know, a change in expectation or a difference of opinion, um, and is there detailed in the policy some, you know, right of reply or grievance or something? If a community member believes that this tree is dangerous and needs to be removed or pruned and, and we deem that it's not, is there some kind of appeal process that's detailed in there as well? Just, just as a, as a backup, as a second look, something like that?
Through the chair, um, councillor, the tree policy is an overarching document and those particulars of back and forth and, and the mechanisms in place for reviewing that, um, request from the resident is outlined in the, uh, technical guidelines, which clearly outlines the processes and aspects of tree that would be, um, ascertained before a refusal is made, or the assessment that could be undertaken by the resident or council in determining whether it, it, it needs to be refused or it needs to be reconsidered.
Yeah councillor, I think you bring up a good point. I think ultimately, you know, oh, yes, we all, we're all in agreement that we want to increase our tree canopy. But I think there's a, as, as representatives of residents, people should have a right of appeal that if they're not, uh, able to deal with the tree, whether it's on their land or council land, that I think having a right of appeal where they could, you know, ultimately has to come to us, come to us to at least sit there and say determine whether, um, there is an issue. I know I've, I got, I've been called out a couple of times to go on local trees because residents were frustrated. You know, one, one resident had his solar panels, his daughter next door has solar panels, she gets this much generating electricity, he gets that much because the tree's overshadowing. And then when he, when he, uh, approached staff, he wasn't able to get anything done. He wasn't able to get a satisfactory outcome in that. You know, another resident, I think my former councillor Alf Vella referred to me, but there was a clearly roots going into her property, causing trip damp, trip hazards and it was causing her frustration, anxiety, um, it was, uh, she was extremely persistent. But I think it was that, you know, uh, other people having a right of appeal to go through, um, where comments, well, yeah. I guess sometimes common sense could be applied, I think it's something we should consider as part of this. Yes, through the C E O.
I wasn't listening.
Oh, thank you.
I refer to the director of, um, of customer service.
Can we get the A C back on?
Through the acting C E O, so trees, and anyone has a claim against council in relation to a tree damage, they generally comes through my team from an insurance perspective. So we have a couple of mechanisms there. We would do an independent assessment, uh, independent of operations or any other area of council in relation to any damage from trees. We can also send that off to our insurance company and the claims management company to have an assessment done. And in some circumstances, when they get quite complex and difficult, we will refer them to the governance team and they'll be treated as a complaint through our complaints process. So there is a, a, a process of review outside of the trees team and the operations team through an insurance assessment, but also through, um, governance.
Through the chair, um, I've got a particular issue with, not an issue, just, just a point on, on the report. Um, there's constituents that live, that they own their property and some properties that are owned by, St George Housing or Department of Housing. And the, the problem with it is that we, as council, we don't have access to those properties. And this, this, this policy doesn't actually, gives us any, how can I say, any authority over that? And there, there's been, in, in my case, there's been two separate properties and two separate incidents where we've written to the Department of Housing, we've contacted them, they haven't gotten back to us and the constituent's still stuck, as you're probably aware with, with the particular scenario that I'm talking about. Is there some type of way that we can add something to that policy to try and engage these entities more, how can I say it, uh, on, on a tougher way?
Through, yeah, um, councillors, I mean, it's, we don't have authority over them, a policy isn't going to change that. We can't write a policy that, um, gives us more authority over, uh, you know, another department. Um, we certainly will represent, uh, constituents if they have a, have a complaint and it affects, but, but we can't, um, force another authority's decision.
Microphone please.
So there's got to be a better way that we can communicate with these authorities to, to either get them on site or a site inspection with them or something. Because at the moment, you can't have a constituent complaining for you for three years about a particular issue, which has become now dangerous, it's an insurance hazard. You know, it raises a lot of issue, a lot of flags, but we're, as council, we can't do anything about it. There's, there's got to be some type of measures that we can, we can work with.
As you state councillor, as council, we can't do anything about it. What we can do is represent the constituent and point out all those particular issues. If there is a health issue or safety issue, then they would be obliged, just like we are. If we, if it's our tree and we're advised of a safety or issue, because potentially if we don't act, uh, and there is an accident, we will have no, no defence. Um, but we can't, other than represent the constituent, we can't force, uh, a third, a third party to, uh, to make a decision the way that you want.
Within, within the policy that we're writing, can we say that if that tree's overhanging on a certain property, can that property owner trim his side of the tree? So if you've got a tree that's overhanging by three metres across on someone else, are you able to trim that three metres off on your side? You're not actually affecting the other side, it's your side. Just some type of measure that we can actually give confidence to the residents that we're working for them.
I, I believe you can, but I'll ask the officer to respond. I might just intervene first, uh, acting C E O. This policy is a big step forward in terms of understanding your, um, your rights and your, um, uh, obligations in terms of tree management. The previous policy was quite ambiguous and very system, this is actually, this informs people much more and more clearly. The, uh, it applies to trees on private property, but obviously we don't men, go in and prune those. And the Department of Housing would love the council to go in and prune their trees because it'd be another cost transfer to the ratepayers. But I know an instance that you've raised, that this gentleman here has written to the local state member. Now, this policy will give us more strength in our right to local members who then take it up with the department around that. I just, uh, you might like to add to that, uh, a res in regard to that and, and also add to it your liaison with the Department of Housing around their tree management, yeah.
Through the chair, um, councillor, the, uh, the tree management technical guidelines through the overall tree management framework, um, provides that guidance on, on the clearances that are required within a neighbour's property and that would really enforce and allow the neighbours to really liaise with their sort of neighbours if their tree is overhanging, to make sure that, okay, the, the policy and the strategy outline that I need to have a three metre clearance or two metre clearance. And then that would give them that, um, sort of enough room to negotiate and persuade them to get their trees pruned. In terms of that particular incident, um, we are now writing to, um, local M P to escalate this matter because it comes to the liability, like council, if council goes into a private land to prune those trees, if anything happened, then it would be a big implication through council, so it just, um.
See, mo- most, most constituents in these matters are happy to pay for the pruning, as long as they get it done. But we can't authorize the pruning because it's not in our land and it's not in their land. So if there's some type of measure within the policy that says we can organize or we can authorize the pruning on your property, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Through the chair, um, councillor, the policy clearly outlines when and where council can accept those requests. So if it's clearly signifies, if the tree is located in a private land, not owned by council or if it's located in a land owned by council. So that has that very clear definition of what's, where, uh, council's remit is, where is land owned by council or public land and where is land not owned by council, which is a private land owned by any other intent entity, government organisation or, um, residents.
Do we have, through the C E O, do we have the simplified fact sheets that articulate that? So it's not really, not everyone's an arborist and most trees behind us, yeah.
Can you, Director of City Futures? Thank you, uh, acting C E O. Um, part of this policy is an education element and we'll do a communications plan and, and add it to the website to be clear where people can go to get information, to a simple, simple fact sheet like you're suggesting will be part of that strategy.
I think it'd be very helpful for us to understand as well, as we get asked a lot of the time about trees. But, um, just through the C E O, on, on the point that was made before by the, um, Director of Customer Service, can we just run through like what are people's right of reply? You know, I guess how long does it normally take, what do they need to do? Because, yeah, um, sounds like it's a bit of a mission.
Director of Customer Service, experience, please.
Through the acting C E O, so if we get a request or a call from a customer, we'll take down their inquiries. We'll also encourage them to put it in writing through the L C C email address, which is an, uh, action to my insurance team. They'll then reach out to confirm the details and the nature of the claim and gather all the internal information that we need and then make an assessment. Generally pretty quick once we've got the information from the resident. When it gets complex, as councillor talked about, where it's not on our land or it's somebody else's tree, that's when it gets complex and can take a little while.
So if, so council, uh, a resident would call up customer service, we then send our tree people out as a first point of call. If they don't agree that the tree should be cut or dealt with, I guess what happens? The person have to then engage an arborist or to talk to our arborist, what happens there?
Through the chair, generally what will happen is our, the, uh, the tree team will make an assessment and provide that report back to us and then we'll make an assessment based on our legislative requirements in relation to liability on that and send it back. In some cases, they engage their own arborist where we say, sorry, we have no liability under the new policy. Um, we wouldn't be doing anything and they would then have to do the work on their own if we then.
So what, what do you mean by, what do you mean by that with the new policy?
So if the, if the, based on what the new policy said, we'll make the insurance determination informed by that. If they're claiming for damage, that's correct.
Yeah, and if they still need to get it, once again, get it removed. Because I know, for example, you know, tree blocks gutters.
Yep.
So people are saying, well, you know, we can't, you know, we're elderly, we can't get up and clean our gutters all the time. We can't afford to clean our gutters, it's clear and, yeah.
So through the chair, in some examples more recently where we've had a tree, uh, damage concrete next to a house, we've made a decision where we've given an excursia payment to that individual at no fault and they've done the work themselves. Where it gets complex and difficult and it's been going on a while, that's generally, I have the discretion under the delegations to do that.
I, I guess where does the, does the tree be able, are they able to remove the tree and replant the, replant the tree in a more suitable location? Because that's, that's what we're trying to establish, yeah.
Through the chair, I can't answer that, I'd have to refer that to City Futures.
A res might be able to add to that, uh, that response and also the appeal if a, a decision is made not to remove a tree. Is there a mechanism for appeal, uh, in our system? And in regards to trees, hopefully in gutters, this new policy is clear about how much you can cut a tree back off a roof to address that, you know, get an arborist in to do it without getting council approval. It's, it's, um, outlined very clearly in this policy, was not in the last policy, it's proposing.
Through the chair, um, the policy, um, does allow, like in terms of the assessment of a tree to be removed or not would be done by various parameters that have been outlined in the tree management technical guidelines. And the arborist and tree assessing officers will, um, assess the tree, its location based on those factors. And if it's determined that, um, it can be removed, um, then, um, yeah, it will be and, and they're allowed to do it. But if, if there are, if those criterias are not met in terms of, um, you know, the, the risk that the tree poses in terms of property or anything, then, um, they, they could raise their concerns and that would be reviewed and, and in terms of what liabilities do council have, whether it's on private land or public land.
So through the C E O, so who would, who would review that?
If it's on council land, then, uh, council, um, tree, tree team within council would review that. If it's on private land, then usually the policy is very clear that we would not, um, get into the private land, um, unless there is a tree pruning request that comes in and then councils, um, tree, um, experts will go and review it as well.
So it's, so it's, I'm, I'm not sure if I understand that, excuse my, my ignorance. So you put the application in.
Yep.
On, let's say the tree's on private land, right, it's in your, in the backyard, they have to ask council for it to be removed.
Correct.
Now they've put an application in.
Yeah, correct.
Council tree team would assess that.
Correct.
And if they say no, we don't agree with you, then I guess at that point, what is their right of appeal?
Mayor, through the chair, um, we'll probably review that and, and they could appeal back in terms of, uh, to council that their concerns are still valid in terms of, um, tree removal and then we could review it as, um, director, um, corporate support was mentioning that, in terms of the liability that we have or councils, like if the tree is not removed, what would be, uh, if there would be any liabilities to council as, as a duty of care, um, then that could be reviewed again.
I mean, is it possible that just so we can get some clarity on this, could we maybe, whether February or March, get a sort of a flow chart of how this works? I think it'd be useful for the people at customer service because they'll get, answer these questions, they ask these questions. But also as councillors, we'll get asked, asked these questions, you know, I don't know about you, but I'm seeing an email every week or every couple of emails a week about a tree.
We, we, we'll circulate a flow chart with the council update.
Yeah, can we have reported back to council, please? Yeah, just saying how, how it works, I think it's important that we know how the, how that actual works. Just so we're, just so we're crystal clear about it. Are the mover and second are happy?
I was just about to suggest to that end, can we put a second point to that?
Yeah.
Sorry, through the chair, if that can also be passed on to our customer service staff, so when they get an inquiry, they can send that via email to the constituent and they can follow it through. And then that way there's no calling us or calling anybody, they've, they've seen the chart, file your form, wait for response within six weeks, blah, 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 and then you end the result.
Any further questions? All right, if there's no further discussion.
No.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Thank you very much, sorry for the many questions, but, um, C F D zero five, community engagement. Thank you very much. Sorry for the many questions, but CFD 05, Community Engagement Strategy 2024, page 289, tab 16 with recommendation on page 289. Move councillor Green. Seconding councillor McNaul. Any discussion? Very important, should be discussed then. There's no further discussion, any discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declaratory carry unanimously. Next item is operation reports. Operation 01, draft plan of management for Light Horse Park, page 294, tab 17, recommendation 295. I do note that the word final is not missing, is not part of this title.
Happy to second.
Move councillor Moon, seconding councillor Hart. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against final report. Declaratory carry. Next time, next item on the agenda is operations 02, Koalas on Heathcote Road. Should say Moorbank Avenue as well, I think they do.
Happy to move.
On 305, page 18, recognition 305. Yep, okay. Move councillor Hart, seconding councillor Green, a motion or? Okay, but you're, are you doing that as a foreshadowed? Is it much different? Yeah. Or how about recommending, adding on to? All right, lovely. Thank you. Microphone, if you don't mind, councillor Green.
Sorry. I thank you for the report, which was very timely. We know that councils have an acknowledged role as having a key role in responsibility managing their local environment. Liverpool is recognised as supporting a growing koala population predominantly along the George's River. Research suggests that Liverpool is a focal area for koalas with the population rapidly increasing fourfold due to environmental conditions producing suitable vegetation and supporting the koala habitat. We also know that koala strikes at the moment, in the recent season have risen. And part of that is because the koalas are migrating in their, and they're, from what I can understand, for traffic in New South Wales is blocking the corridor as well. What we need to better understand for a koala management plan to be developed is that we can help identify what the corridors are, we can better understand the location and health of the koalas and their habitats across the LGAs. So my most, what I'm wanting to do is for council to develop a koala management plan that is consistent with the SEP, State Environmental Planning Policy Koala Habitat Protection of 2019 and the New South Wales Koala Strategy 2022. That supports a range of conservation actions to provide more habitat for koalas, support local community action, improve koala health and safety and build the knowledge to improve better koala conservation across our LGA. We are also, our LGA, we don't have one, we're like the missing link. And it would just strengthen, in terms of strengthening and working in collaboration with Campbelltown.
Speak further for your motion, sorry.
Sorry.
Is the mover happy to accept that as part of his motion?
Through the mayor, councillor Green, I was going to suggest, would you like to move it? And then I'm happy to second it because you've done the legwork and you should take credit for it.
Well, thank you councillor Hart.
Wonderful. Please continue councillor Green, speaking for your motion.
Liverpool has not currently got a koala management plan. And it would strengthen, in doing so, would strengthen our collaboration between Campbelltown and Sutherland. And it would mean that then that's like an unbroken chain along the George's River. There's also opportunity, there is, because we're identified as an investment area in the, in the New South Wales Koala Strategy Plan. Also opens up funding opportunities in terms of bush regeneration. It also will help with further mapping in understanding where the colonies are, how healthy they are. I was fortunate enough to go on a, on country workshop out at Campbelltown. And one of the participants there was like Cumberland Plain, how to look after the Cumberland Plains. And one of them said, oh, we talked about the koalas and she said they'd been on the defence land and the colony there is quite large. And this is why the corridors are really important, that we understand that. So I would ask all councillors to please support this motion so that we can progress this work. I understand the beginning point is requires a cost of $65,000. I have spoken with the CFO and I understand that there is money available that can be applied to this from the CEO's contingency fund.
I'll refer to the CEO.
We may have the opportunity to fund it from the environment levy. That's external restriction that could cover this. That way you wouldn't touch general funds. So you may have an alternative source, yeah.
So do we have to add a point three to fund the koala management plan through the environment levy? And through the mayor, councillor Green, I just, one change. I think we should get rid of across the Liverpool LGA because I know, and it's getting a bit technical, like for example, Dedman's Creek is technically in Sandy Point. And that's Sutherlandshire LGA and I think that's still very relevant to what we do in Liverpool. So if you're happy with that, that'll be great. And I just want to say as well, incredibly important, happy to second. Transport for New South Wales at the moment are undergoing community consultation for fencing along Dedman's Creek, which is a very, very positive change, a positive update. It's been a long time coming and I know the fantastic work of the Sutherlandshire Environment Centre, those people down there, they do a fantastic job in advocating for this. So, yeah, I, I think it will be very important because I do believe this report also says that part of the fencing is, requires a development application. And that falls within the Liverpool LGA from my understanding. So I think we should be very supportive of that. And perhaps even make a, I encourage everyone to make a submission if they're interested.
Can I ask a question?
Laura McNaul.
Thank you. I don't think it needs to be added to the motion or anything like that, but I wonder as a starting point of going on the journey of policy, you know, development, whether we might be able to have circulated to all councillors, the koala management plan from Campbelltown and the Shire so that we can see where they're at with it and.
Deputy Mayor.
Number three, fund the koala management plan through the environment levy. I don't think you can do that. There are very strict limitations on what you can actually do with the environment levy. The environment levy was originally proposed for bushland regeneration. So I'm not sure, I think you'd need to look at it to find out whether or not you can actually use it.
Councillors, can I suggest that we amend three to say that we investigate a funding source and come back?
I'd be happy with that.
So can I just happy with that, I'm sure, nodding his head? Is any further discussion?
Yes, as an additional point, you might want to look at the environment levy, how you may be able to modify that to suit some of these things because, I mean, koala habitat management is part of the environment. And maybe you should be looking at the environment levy to be a little bit broader than what it is. I know I was talking some time ago about planting trees and so on, you know, in areas and you couldn't do it. It was strict limitations. So maybe we need to look at it and make it.
Yeah, I think we should talk about that in the governance committee because it's a, that, that is probably over 20 plus years old and it's, yeah, and have a look at it and see what else to, because there's a special rate levy associated with it. So it's, that's good. But I just want to point though, you can now with a new tree policy and a lot more Cumberland Wood Plain. I want to say, you know, a lot more Cumberland Wood Plain, you might have koalas up and down the streets one day, you know what I mean? Yeah, on all those wonderful trees that will be planted.
Onto Custola Station was the very same, and I'm unaware that what happened with that koala, it ended up in a backyard with dogs. So, you know, we don't want that happening to koalas in our, in our area. But again, it exhibited, it demonstrated why we need to have a koala management plan.
No further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declaratory unanimous. Next item is two. Operations 03, street sweeper operations, page 309, tab 19 with the recommendation on page 309.
I've got a motion.
Yes, councillor Sevsky.
Just, just before they put it up, with the street sweepers existing ones, do we have any finance on those at the moment?
I'll refer that to the Director of Operations, the manager.
So through the acting CEO, I'll take that question on notice. I can't tell you off the top of my head, I'm not sure. We have leasing arrangements for all of our plant, but you're asking me those three particular plant. I wouldn't know the term of the leasing arrangement, so I'll take it on notice.
And also if we're meeting those repayments according to the loan agreement. So in relation to my motion, according to the report, I mean, honestly, we can't wait five years, you know, to, to get another street sweeper. We, we need to take action now. According to the report, it takes 16 weeks, if you're lucky enough and there's no sick days, to get your street cleaned the second time.
So councillors, just got to, do we have a second for your motion? Seconding councillor Conne. Go ahead.
Yeah, so basically we need the street sweepers, there's a lot of community. You know, they're always calling us in relation to the streets not being cleaned enough. You know, it's, I know we have budgetary constraints and I'm trying to see where we can try and find some money for this. So we're not saying buy it today, but just to come back with a, with a report. And the community feedback we're getting, there's a desire for streets to be cleaned and maintained. And we need to make this investment a priority for the community satisfaction.
So I just got to look at the point two there. Can you just elaborate on that, please?
I'm trying to find a potential funding source that we can buy a additional street sweeper in the next 12 months rather than wait five years for another one. I've identified two areas, I'm happy to remove that and maybe the CEO can come back with some fun, funding sources with that and impacting frontline services.
I think they're being leased rather than owned. I'll just get the Director of Operations to confirm.
Yeah, so we have leasing arrangements for all of our plant. You asked me, are they still under lease? I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I'll take that on notice. Second part to that was, are we meeting the repayments? Of course, I'll answer that as well. But it's not the report, if I may, the recommendation is not to wait five years for a, for the next street sweeper. What the report recommendation is, is that you note and accept the report, we go away, do a gap analysis, tell you what our requirements are for the next five years, which may be more than one street sweeper councillor, because we have, you know, Bradfield and the Eretropolis coming, so that we do a proper gap analysis and come back with a plan, including what the costs of that would be, back to council for endorsement. That is the recommendation, is not recommending us wait five years because I would agree with your sentiments councillor.
Sorry, can you turn off your microphone, please, Director?
I'm happy to amend the motion. One of the things I wanted to look at, you know, how do we maximise the full capacity? Are the train being staffed? Do we need more train, more staff being trained if some are, some are sick? So maybe just incorporate that part of the, as a report to come back to council, the part one, second paragraph.
Councillor Sevsky, through the mayor, just to try and clean this up. I think it's very, and as the acting director for operations said, it's a bit arbitrary to, to limit it to one additional street sweeper. So is it possible, maybe we can just move the recommendation and then add a point two to it perhaps? Because I think we want the gap analysis. I don't think, you know, we want to restrict ourselves to an additional street sweeper.
I totally agree with your comments and I, and I actually would like to do that, but add that part that says the report should outline if the machines are being, just that one line.
Ideally, what we're talking about here is it's ultimately the provision of, provision of services. And the, this is a discussion that we can, should be looked at as part of the budget process for the 2526 budget. Because, yeah, I guess doing something halfway through a current budget is probably a little bit challenging and I don't know if we actually would get, you know, you wouldn't be able to spend any money this side of the financial year, I'd say. But also we need to look at it holistically as well. We're talking about street sweeping, but, you know, we've added over 1,500 dwellings this year. That's what we budgeted for. And there's a lot, you don't want to think, well, what are the other maintenance issues that we have, that we need to be dealt with from the frontline services? If anything that has to keep on growing in this organisation is more of the, the yellow shirts out there, cutting the grass and working on the rubbish. So I just, I, I've never seen a report that projects forward what our increase in, in maintenance services actually, actually are.
Well, we do do a 10 year capital works programme that includes review of plant and fleet and the likes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about the capital work side of it. More referring to the, literally just the, the teams cutting the grass, picking up the rubbish, the maintenance crews. Yeah, so. So it's, in reality, as we prepare for the next budget, it would be good to get a, to once again, have a method, no, now we have, is the, can we ask, is the telematics assisting, helping in this? Like, can we actually see, is there a map to show where the street sweeper is going? Do we have that data now? Through the CEO.
Through the acting CEO, yes, all of our vehicles have telematics on them, including PTO engagement, which means when the sweepers go down, when they're engaged as well. So we have all of that data every single day for all of our sweepers, morning shift and afternoon shift.
Could, could we just get, I guess, for the, for, I guess, everyone, because we, the previous council installed the telematics, which, you know, was a, a significant tool for us to, to have. But are we able to maybe get, I guess, a briefing how the telematics is working so we can actually, so we can actually see? But also through the budget process, look at how we, you know, forward project these fund, these, these, what do they call it? The demands for growth as we, as we go forward?
Through the acting CEO, yes, Mr Mayor, we can do that for you, both on telematics and across the other. and across the other main, I guess, services that we provide, which are the maintenance, which would include waste and cleansing and also civil operations. And we're also have done quite a fair bit on parks and open spaces in anticipation of growth.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if the mover and seconder would be happy with something along those lines? So basically versus rather than just looking at street sweeping, we're looking at all of our maintenance requirements and projections of growth required over the next five years in preparation for next year's uh budget. Yeah?
In terms of a gap analysis of those areas, yeah, I'm I'm not against that.
The mover was nodding, yes. So if we can word that up somehow, so um endorse, take a gap analysis. So maybe street sweeper and other frontline service, frontline maintenance services. As part of the, and maybe we just add at the end of that sentence, as part of the twenty five, twenty six budget preparations. And if you want to keep the uh point two, that's fine, neither here nor there. If you still want the point two as part of it. Sorry, yeah, thank you. Through the CEO.
So the other point that we might want to add uh as a suggestion is because we're looking at five years, does do we also need to consider the long term financial plan and the implications to that just beyond one budget year? Given what has been requested. Thank you.
Councillors, we do a, we do a um long term uh human resource plan, capital works program, maintenance. So that will all be part of this project.
Councillor Sevsky, do you still want that other part about? Yes, okay, yes, so I put that as a point two. And I guess in the spirit of the whole budget preparations means through the normal discussion processes and governance committee and so on and so forth. Okay, if the mover in secondary, any, the councillor, deputy mayor?
I have a question. Uh in terms of looking at it currently, it's the turnaround to go back, I believe that's what it is. You get back to the same place, takes fourteen weeks currently. That's four months. That's a season. So what what the problem is that I I believe, if you have a look at some of these roads, uh particularly where you've got gum trees on the side, the gutters are totally full of leaves. Now, that may not be an issue in terms of what's happening there, but the problem now comes. The stuff that's in the gutters, garbage and whatever else ends up in the drainage systems. And we don't have enough gross pollution traps, GPTs, to make sure that that doesn't end up in the river. Which means if you've got a fourteen week turnaround, there's a substantial amount of rubbish that's going to end up in our creeks, rivers and so on. Maybe we need to look at not just an increase of one, we may need to have a better system of of looking at this so that you, maybe the turnaround time is three weeks, not four months. That's just a, I know this is an operational issue and I don't want to get involved in that, but just an observation is that, you know, drive around Mowbray on Carra John Road, Mowbray Avenue, which is the main turnoff, if you look at that area there, it's littered with leaves. And it's been like that for months and months and months. And all of that ends up in the, and it's a low flow drainage system, which is the last thing that you really want to block up. It's just a point of view and I think we need to look at that in terms of maintenance.
Yep, and and I think um ultimately it gets down to what level of service that we want that we want to fund uh to our community. Um so that's part of it. And I'll I'll flag this now from the next item for the neighbourhood area reinstatement. The neighbourhood area has talked about, you know, one, just cutting the grass. Where I think the 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 imagination of neighbourhood is probably a bit more broader than that because it's just, it's, yeah, there could be a lot of efficiencies. I really think that, you know, when we get to operation, when we get to the next item, that that also should be considered as part of the budget process, but I'll talk a bit more about that.
Um when we get there. All right, any other further discussion? I'll put the motion then. All those in favour, against, declare unanimous. All right, operation zero four, um page three one three, tab twenty, recommendation three one three. Um I'll move that we defer this um uh to uh item to be discussed on a governance committee. And for also to be part of the twenty four, twenty, twenty five, twenty six budget process. Seconding councillor Moon. Um just speaking for the motion. You know, I look at my lower neighbourhood of Preston's at the moment and how it operates, where you have one person who comes, or one team that comes and cuts the parks. Another team that comes and cuts the uh uh, you know, the sidewalks near the the verges and another team that comes and does roundabouts. Uh and, you know, they're all well intended, but I think there's a, there are other uh communities out there um that do things a little bit differently and having us, it would be really good if we look at sort of a multi, having more multi skilled uh 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 staff who can do broader things, but more so about take responsibility for an area. You know, versus, you know, you can imagine if you go and cut some grass, but then you see some rubbish. Well, hold on, I'm not in the rubbish team, but I'm going to drive back to the depot and then we had to send someone from the depot to come back out. So I think there's really good, more holistic, taking ownership, you know? Yeah, I remember when the um, when that, the two areas were mentioned in here, when the trial of area A and area B, whatever was east and west. You know, some of the staff got upset because the people who I think was looking after Water Grove, like, hold on, this is our area, we know how to do this, right? And it's, you can see they take a lot of pride in in what happens at Water Grove and i- it's wonderful and it'd be great. I think we had some more of that. But even even if you look at, you know, the compliance, like Liverpool is a humongous LGA. And, you know, if people are driving from all the way from here, all the way to get to Greendale and back, it's, there's a lot of efficiencies I think we can do. So it'd be really good to workshop that and spend a bit of time on this issue because I think we could um improve the level of service that we get from our community, because I know the staff really want to, really want to please our community, but I think this could be worth discussing then. Deputy mayor?
Oh, I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. I thought we were doing that already. I thought that had been changed a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Back to the, you know, the areas.
Yeah, that's what I said, the red book. I think it's, was it eight areas or something in in the report? So it was um, but I'm talking about a bit more than that. That's just talking about cutting grass. What I'm saying is it's the other stuff that could potentially be done in a in a neighbourhood fashion.
Just got a question uh through the CEO. Um how does each team know what work is needed and is captured in the technology that they use? I think they use like uh each team has a, an iPad.
Through the uh director of operations.
Through through the acting CEO. So each area under the red book area has designated assets. And so it is all the various things that they need to do. If you, maybe a second thing that needs to either become a briefing or part of a governance session would be the adoption of brightly. So we have brightly as a system that manages our assets. But we are implementing the brightly maintenance module. So to your point, councillor, that is what will then go from what is called the red book program, which is an Excel based program, into a tablet based program.
And the other question was uh um coordinators in relation to special requests for parks and that, we, how do we even the workout? And we can't have one coordinator on ten jobs and another one on four hundred. How do we even that out, sir?
Through the acting CEO, so there are three areas, so three areas and three different coordinators that deal with parks and open spaces. And then we also have a coordinator for our trees teams. So the work is allocated depending on where it comes through, if it happens to be via a CRM. So they have their scheduled works. We might also have some customer requests. And then we might also get some VIP requests or some councillor requests. And those are then dealt with as they come to us as well. So it might not land in that particular, all in that one coordinator, it just depends on where it comes from, councillor. But each coordinator has a designated area and they will deal with the schedule work and then the additional work that comes up.
But if one's got four hundred and the other one's got ten, how do we even that out to promote efficiencies in the operation?
Well, councillor, obviously that's an operations matter that the staff will manage, the management will manage the coordinators down to individual staff so that obviously they're all um work working to a level that they can manage uh and it's shared appropriately and and monitored by coordinators and managers.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in, sorry councillor Moon. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item, our committee reports.
Move as a whole.
Move councillor McNair, seconding councillor Green, they all be moved as a whole. I'm talking about traffic.
Can I pull the traffic one, please? You're talking about the committees?
Yeah, you can just talk, yeah, just, you want to go for it, you can talk about it now if you like.
Just, can I get a quick update on Lismore Street, please?
Quick? Let's take a shortcut to get there.
Can you provide an update on Lismore Street? Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh through the CEO. So uh through uh the recent uh traffic committee discussion, it was agreed that we would uh take further, um we we would undertake further work. Um so at the moment, we're currently preparing a scope of work. And uh that scope of work is likely to look at the more holistic opportunities to fix the problem. Considering all options um that are available, uh as suggested at the previous council meeting as raised as a as a resolution. So um we are progressing that at the moment. So we expect to have a consultant on board to assist with that, using the money provided by council early in the new year.
Sorry, so so we're looking at a traffic management plan of the area?
Effectively, it it will be a little bit more of a uh an an assessment rather than a plan. So it will explore different options. Um what is viable, what gets the best benefit, um low cost, medium, high cost, et cetera. So one might be, say, you know, full red paint, like bus lanes on Lismore Street, kind of, you know, lots of signage. There's a couple of similar things out in Penrith where effectively make it a public transport only street or something like that. Another option could be a one way circulation system, um using the the connection that's already been approved by council from first and nineteenth. Um so we've got a few options. Um effectively, though, the scope won't consider major options like uh major bridges and upgrades to the state road network. So those were, those were ruled out.
But can we, can we, sorry, through the CEO, can we include, I guess, those larger projects? You know, if they would help, I know councillor Harley talked about that bridge that needs to be, that built. Is that something that we can ultimately lobby state and federal government for?
Uh through, yeah, through the CEO, uh ultimately, yes, yes, we can lobby for them. So that they'll be raised in in the report as an option and an opportunity, but obviously something like that's going to take a lot of time and a lot of money to get to get up, but yes.
Yeah, so um just two other things. So where are we at now with the changes that were implemented last, was it September, uh uh August? How, what are we looking at, the numbers in traffic flogs? Obviously, the emails are still coming through, it's still an issue, but have we seen any improvement?
Uh through the CEO, yes, we saw an improvement um from forty two thousand vehicles a week down to thirty thousand vehicles a week.
Is that where we are at the moment?
That's where we are at the moment. However, the maximum number for that street to operate safely is fourteen thousand vehicles.
Fourteen, wow, okay.
So we're still a long way from a a safe operating environment.
My last question before I go to councillor Green. I was driving through um the Orange Grove Estate uh recently and, you know, I think they suffered as a previously, I imagine there used to be a rat run between Elizabeth Drive and Cumberland Highway. And I noticed the uh, the type of speed humps that they use, which are, I would call them more than a speed hump because it's almost like a little mini mountain, right? The, I guess, do we, are we still able to do speed humps like that that are very, very large and as I tell you, you cannot speed if that is on there and you would, if you're driving a low car, you'd remove a lot of the hoons off that street for sure.
Through the CEO, um we tend not to use the steeper ones now because they do, in residential areas, they do make more noise. So the residents tend to complain about the noise of the vehicles bumping over them. Whereas that might be more suitable in an area like Orange Grove.
Oh, it's still a lot of residents there, it's not much.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant the um, the retail centre there.
Yeah, no, no, this is um, I don't know what's, what, is it Woodward? Is it, no, Woodlands? Um Marsden, Marsden, Marsden Road, Marsden Road Public.
Yeah.
Are they? Good. All right, we're for councillor Green, any questions?
Part of it was undertaking a revised communication strategy to update the local residents and wider community. Was was, what kind of, was that done and what kind of act of strategy was implemented?
So in terms of quick fixes, um we've changed the way that we've, we're communicating to residents that are making complaints. So there's a lot of uh complaints around violence and things that we have no control over. And so our our automatic responses are referring residents to police um as well as various reporting lines, et cetera. And uh we're effectively saying, we're not going to, we're not going to be responding to these from a council perspective anymore. In in addition, we we will do intend to issue a broader update to the community once we bid down the timeline around the further work uh that we're going to make. So that, hopefully, we can do that by um before the Christmas shutdown, so.
Councillor Conne?
Yes, um you talked about the reduction um from about forty plus thousand to about thirty thousand with the goal being about fourteen thousand. So it's still overused by double. But the immediate decrease of about ten to fourteen thousand already, is there an indication or a study on where those users have shifted to in any particular other road? Because the last thing, of course, you want is to just shift the problem.
The the problem did shift. So uh it went uh to the intersection further to the west, I can't recall the name off the top of my head. But it did, it did increase traffic at that location. Um we are using data from Transport for New South Wales intersections that they're giving us as part of this work um to understand all of those um, all of those impacts. Um but yes, it did have an impact on on other intersections.
Can I ask, in the same quantum, did you notice a shift of users in, like, was it a significant portion of that ten to fourteen thousand?
Yes, yes.
Almost identical?
Almost, yes.
No further discussion. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll now call a quick ten minute recess. Be back at five forty. This councillor Hart, page three forty seven, page twenty five.
Uh thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh no further questions. Thank you to council staff for preparing this.
Just a quick one, um I noticed the exhibition grants on page three five four was significantly less than previous. Is there any reason behind that?
Last the director.
Yeah, and just, and just, sorry, just before we go there, um I'm just reflecting on our last meeting and the the purposes of questions with notice. It's the point being, ask a question and allow staff to spend the time to get the answers for that in a timely uh fashion. And yeah, I I I think that we need to refrain from turning questions with notice into a bit of an inquisition that ideally follow up questions. Unless they're very simple and straightforward should be asked, but other than that, they should be follow up questions, I believe, should be in writing to allow staff to be able to adequately uh answer them uh just going forward. Hence the purpose of why they are on notice. But I'm, in this situation, I'm happy if the staff want to end. But in this situation, I'm happy if the staff want to answer or take it on notice.
Thank you, through the CEO, councillor Restrissey, I'd have to take it on notice more broadly. There has been a less of a, more broadly speaking, there's been less of a focus on visual arts elements at the powerhouse. So we've had much more success in getting grants for other items. So that's why you've seen a decline, but let me get some further information and come back to you.
Cool. Next item is question with notice zero two, councillor Hart, page three fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I just have one question for the CEO. It says here, page three six one, relocation options are being considered and will be brought to council for further consideration. Can we be advised on what has been thought of and what's been considered currently?
Sorry councillor, I didn't hear the question.
On page three six one of the report, it says relocation options are being considered and will be brought to council for further consideration. I was just wondering if we can get more detail on that and what's being considered.
Director Cook, customers.
Thank you, through the CEO, councillor Hart, can I confirm that you mean for the museum? Or more broadly?
It's under the, yeah, the Liverpool Regional Museum.
Yes, so you could see in the report there that there are a number of barriers that exist in the existing site. So we are exploring different options, I won't bring them to the floor at this point in time because they need to be discussed at the executive level, but there is some considerations for a better fit for the museum.
Thank you.
So next item is com zero four, in addendum book five, page two three six nine with a recommendation on page two three seventy.
I'm happy to move as per the book with a number of amendments to the proposed code.
Yeah, sorry councillor Monahan.
Yes, so as per the book with a number of amendments to the following clauses in the draft code. amend clause three point two to read, the council shall meet at six PM at a place of its choosing at a place of its choosing for ordinary meetings. Three point three to read, amend clause three point three to read. If the mayor receives a request in writing signed by at least two councillors, the mayor must call an extraordinary meeting of the council to be held as soon as practicable. But in any event, no more than fourteen days after the receipt of the request at six PM at Civic Place, the mayor can be one of the two councillors requesting the meeting. At request, delete the full stop. No, no, sorry, I mean, as in literally, not those words. Thank you. At six PM at Civic Place, full stop, the mayor can be one of the two councillors requesting the meeting. Three point seven to read the CEO must send to each councillor at least seven days before each meeting of the council a notice specifying the time, date and place at which the meeting is to be held. Held comma and the business to be considered at the meeting. Clause three point one seven to read, the CEO must cause the agenda for a meeting of A the council to be prepared and distributed to councillors a full week prior to the meeting. And B any committee to be prepared as soon as practicable before the meeting. Insert a new clause which would be three point one eight to follow three point one seven. Sorry, that should be a new point. From there, yes, thanks. Which would be three point one eight. No additional agenda items to be provided after the day specified in clause three point one seven. Clause eight point two the general order of business for an ordinary meeting of the council shall be points one through to nine to remain the same. Point eleven, public forum. Point twelve, petitions. Point ten, merrill minutes. I'm sorry, that's the point in the book, but it should read in chronological order. So point eleven would be point ten. And then point twelve becomes point eleven. That becomes, thank you. Point thirteen, notices of motion slash questions with notice. Point fourteen, reports to council. Fifteen reports of committees. Point sixteen, confidential matters. Point seventeen, conclusion of the meeting.
Just not to interrupt, but point eleven should read petitions, not divisions.
Did I say divisions, did I?
How did you not put only seven, how did you not put only seventeen? Did you remove two items?
Eight, nine. Precision motion, oh, sorry, yes, I did miss a couple. Point, between points thirteen and fourteen, precision motions.
Actually, hold on, the skips four and five.
Oh, there we go, I did miss one though. And then a new paragraph. Clause nine point six to read subject to clause nine point nine. If the mayor is the chairperson at a meeting of the council, the mayor may by minute signed by the mayor put to the meeting with no less than three business days' notice. Any matter or topic that is within the jurisdiction of the council or of which the council has official knowledge. And then another paragraph, I can mercifully say this is the final one. Clause eighteen point three to read. If the business of the meeting is unfinished after five hours since its commencement, the chairperson must either A defer consideration of the remaining items of business on the agenda to the next ordinary meeting of the council. Or B adjourn the meeting to six PM on a date and place determined by the council prior to the meeting being declared closed.
So anything else, that was it? Councillor Monahan?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and councillor Kinnip, you're the second over there? So we just have to refer to the director of corporate support. There are, I think, a couple of things potentially that may be in contradiction of the, I don't know if there is, if you wanted to make any comment.
Sorry.
I may through the CEO. Couple of general points, if I may. Firstly, some of the matters in the code of meeting practice are required by legislation or dictated by parliament. Secondly, there is a requirement that we not have things in our code of meeting practice that are inconsistent with the model code of meeting practice. So third point I would make is, I've had no notice of these proposed changes to the code of meeting practice that's before you today. So any advice that I give or that acting general counsel gives has to be prefaced with that qualification. It's very difficult, I can't even see all of the changes on the screen that have just been run through very quickly. So to make the assessment both against the legislation and the model code is very difficult in those circumstances. The fourth thing I'd say is that if we look at some of the changes, the change to three point seven, which proposes that notice be given seven days prior to the meeting rather than three days. Three days is the period specified by parliament in the act. The section referred to underneath that provision is three hundred and sixty-seven of the act. So I'm not sure that it's open to this council to specify a different period than parliament has set for the giving of notice. The second point I'd make is in relation to the proposed change in relation to merrill minutes, the requirement for notice is not something that's contained within the model code of meeting practice. And to the extent that the model code is providing that matters can be brought to the meeting, it's not including the requirement for three days' notice. And I would think that that requirement for notice would be inconsistent with what's in the model code, on my quick reading of it. Now, there may be other matters that have been put that I haven't had a chance to reflect on yet. If I were to give fair advice to this council, would it be helpful to have time to reflect on the various changes that have been put forward so that we can express a point of view on whether they would meet the requirements of the legislation? Both things which are directly specified in the legislation and things which kind of come in by virtue of the model code of meeting practice.
So I think councillor, the based on the significant amount of changes required in the different provisions that need to be considered, you know, I would have, once in, for us just to adopt this, and I think it's something that we can do, unless we spent, unless we just paused for a while and went through this, item by item, and to check that, which I'm happy to, but I will preface, it'll probably take us a good hour.
It will.
Right, so if you want to, I'll get to you in a moment councillor, but if you want to say there is no time constraint on us to adopt this yet, I think, so you can get a report back at the next meeting with regards to these changes.
Look, I will, I will say and apologize for not having provided it earlier. The cutoff for the nominations and business paper, questions with notice, that sort of thing, was the twenty-sixth of November, which was the date of the last meeting, so I was, I thought it was out of time, even by then. So, look, I'm happy to, I'm happy to have that.
It's been very busy, but I think if you get, like, there's, you, the staff are available and help will help assist and draft outside of those non deadlines. Because obviously if something could be drafted earlier, it helps everybody involved typing and all that stuff.
So, look, if the position is that we request a report confirming whether or not any of those proposed changes are inconsistent with with either the oak government with either the Oak Government Act or the Model Code of Meeting Practice, uh, to come back, um, well, as soon as practicable. I won't say the first meeting, because I think there are quite enough.
Yep.
Uh, I just want to note, we, uh, this was an item on the agenda, the last council meeting, or the council meeting before, it got deferred. Uh, it was, went to a governance committee meeting, it was discussed. And now this is wholesale changes to the Code of Meeting Practice. Um, you know, I think we've had ample time to, you know, have these discussions and all of a sudden we've just been, uh, all, you know, all of these changes being, uh, given to us to consider and contemplate in such a short period of time. Um, I, I don't think that's good governance whatsoever. Um, I'll leave it at that for now.
Through the Chair, I, yes, I'm, uh, that's why some of the amendments are made, um, and I hear what you say that, uh, matters with, uh, a lot of detail require consideration, that's why I'm content. And I think the move, the secondary is also content with my further deferral to consider these, given that they couldn't be, um, put in time for the last meeting, uh, and, and quite rightly, as you pointed out, it was deferred for this, to this meeting for this purpose. Um, so, and given the lack of, or no time constraints on whether or not we can get this done, um, I think, uh, it's quite right to say that deferring it to consider it is, is the best course of action.
And my full Counsel Monahan, just got elected as a councillor and started the job a week later or so, wasn't it? Uffleton, not too far.
We're all very busy. Um, I just want to say as well, you know, now we're requesting a report in to make, to make changes, then to, for it to go into public consultation, and we're just kicking the can down the road. I, I think we need to get the ball rolling when it comes to community consultation. We, you know, we've, uh, we, I don't think there's any point in waiting another two months until February to have this discussion again.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, great, Counsel Carnib?
A little bit unfair, Counsel Harter, suggests that they're wholesale changes. When you look at the Code of Meeting Practice, it's a thorough, detailed document. The parts raised by Counselor Monahan are multifaceted, but really approach the same parts. Now, whilst I hear what General Counsel has to say about that particular point, and I accept that part, but I think, sorry, not General Counsel, the Director of, of Corporate Support, the preface of that change is, it's not an ideal practice for agendas to be provided, and I understand council staff are busy. But when we have big agendas, it's not ideal practice to get the agendas on Thursday, Friday, addendums on the Monday, council meeting on the Wednesday, merril minutes on the day of. I'd like to see a bit of structure in the way we get material deadlines, so we're all reading from the same stuff. Therefore, we can adequately deal with stuff, and that might alleviate some of Counselor Hart's concerns about the fact that there won't be so much deferrals, because we'll have adequate time, like seven days to consider things. Now, when we look at, when we look at the details of what's in there, it's in most model codes and other Code of Meeting Practices, time to be stipulated in there. This does not change what is consistent with other model codes. It was resolved by council, it was adopted by this council. There is no issue with that being in a Code of Meeting Practice. It was in there before, it was articulated in detail the time of it. You'll notice that a couple of the other changes also just reflect, rather than say at a time to be set, really just mirror that change, which is the same as asserted in the timing of it being at six P M. The other, um, amendments, if I could just, if, if I could trouble staff to shift up through this page just briefly on this issue?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Just stop there and just, a bit, sorry, a bit back down. So again, three point two and three point three relate to purely timings, if we can scroll down. To preface three point seven, the purpose of that really, it, it's not about the setting of the time and date, but really just having access to the material with sufficient time to get across it. We've got a ton of these bundles that I picked up from the councillor support room, and that was on the basis that we were here for a confidential briefing, conveniently all councillors were here to pick them up. This is not something that is, that should be gone through over a couple of days. And I appreciate that the, the noms come through at a period of time, and it's a lot of work to put this together, but a lot of work needs to have to be able to consider these items thoroughly. And really, that's the purpose of what's intended by the amendment to three point seven. So, in terms of the legalities, of course, we'll be guided by you, uh, General Counsel, the Acting Director of Corporate Support. But if we could scroll back down further to three point eighteen, and sorry, eight point two. At the, eight point two, really, all that does is allows notice of motions and questions with notice to get a degree of priority, because that's what we, that's what has been raised by ten or eleven elected councillors. Nine point six. And in respect of nine point six, with, with respect, of course, the mayor's got the right, as per the legislation, to put through merril minutes, and there's no issues with that. Um, they're important, they need to be put, but I think three days' notice is sufficient notice to be able to adequately get the material, consider it, and then go from there. Because otherwise, if, for example, the merril minutes become contentious for whatever particular reason, and we don't have enough time to consider, we're getting bogged down for two hours debating whether or not a merril minute should be voted on or what have you, whereas if we had had sufficient time to three days, maybe alleviates a bit of that concern. Scroll down, thank you, if you can, please. So I think that's it. I don't think what I've just read out are wholesale changes to the Code of Meeting Practice. It's solidifying time, structure, and a timeline of when we should get material, which is good governance. Um, maybe the reason there hasn't been the greatest level of governance over the last three months is because, and there hasn't been that preface of a good governance in terms of getting all the material. We've got to also factor in that we've got six new councillors, and making sure that we've got the material in advance, I think, is important.
Amun, what's your point of order?
We have had plenty of good governance in this council, we've been running for the past three years with good governance. This hasn't happened over three months. It's the changes that are trying to be implemented that I believe so quickly that are not, not good governance.
I, I get your point. Uh, Counsel, uh, Carnib, I, I agree with Counselor Amun. You know, by saying that we haven't had good governance in the last three months, it puts, it puts council in a, a negative light, so I ask that you...
What I'll do is, I withdraw it, I'll rephrase it this way. Counsel, Counselor Hart was talking about,
Thank you.
this is not good governance. With respect to what this is trying to do is affect good governance. He's saying the suggestion of, of bringing this forward with wholesale changes isn't good governance. I disagree with that. In my view, it's not wholesale changes, and it's not bad governance.
I get it.
Yes, so it's, it's not about, it's not about criticizing council for its governance over a period of time. It's the specific commentary about putting this forward before council.
All right, thank you. I've got to go to Counselor McNaul before I go to Counselor Hart.
Thank you, just a couple of points, Mr Mayor. And, and first of all, I'd like clarification that we are on a timeframe to get this done. I don't think that there is an open-ended timeframe, is that correct?
It was twelve months from the election, I think, but, twelve months from the election. Microphone, please, and Counsel Hart.
Thank you. Um, look, and, and I, you know, regardless of the way, and I respect Counselor Carnib, your commentary on what, what we just discussed, and you obviously have a legal spin on the way that you, you went through these changes, and I respect that. But the governance, as far as good governance goes, and I will coin a term by my friend Counselor Green, you know, authentic collaboration is what gets things across the line the best way. And that's not, you know, this, in all seriousness, has been to a council meeting and a governance committee meeting. And my understanding was that we left it last time with a will email around what we're looking at. And yet here we have a lot of changes on the fly that we aren't sure meet the, the standard of governance we need, as, as the Director, Acting Director of Corporate Support has told us. So, you know, um, I don't think that, I, I'm absolutely not comfortable moving this forward without the assurances of the legal council, um, that we are doing the right thing. And I would, I would appreciate, um, and I understand what you said and about governance, and I get that. And man, if you can give me the papers earlier, absolutely. But I just don't think, you know, putting all of these changes through in half an hour is the best use of deliberation.
Can I just say, sorry, I don't want to take anyone's, I don't want my commentary there to suggest that this motion be put today. I'm certainly not against General Counsel going away and coming back as to the legalities, particularly with three point one seven. And that's why I thought it was worthwhile explaining the intent behind it. Um, because it's important, and a Code of Meeting Practice is detailed, specific and accurate, because the ambiguity around it in some aspects, I think, is what creates its, its flaws. Now, it's a detailed, that's why it's taken some time for, for me personally to consider it. But again, um, just on Counselor McNaul's comments, I'm not against it going over. Um, of course, for, for a report to come back, which is, I'm not anti that at all, it doesn't need to, I'm not suggesting the motion be put today in this particular way.
All right, cool. Just Counsel Hart, then I've got to Counsel A G.
I, I think if that's the case, I, you know, I, we should still continue with community consultation. Like, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been, I looked at clause three point two, if we can go up. Please. Uh, so, you know, amending three point two to be, uh, at a place of its choosing for ordinary meetings. And then, so that's quite open-ended. And then extraordinary meetings is very prescriptive by, um, saying it has to be a civic place. So, like, you know, I think there needs to be a lot more contemplation than, um, you know, uh, what we've just been given right now. And, you know, like, it, like, it's, I think it's important to consult with the councillors, but more importantly, consult with the General Counsel, which has not occurred. Um, and I, you know, like, you talk about poor gov, you know, if, if it is poor governance to receive, um, uh, uh, meeting agendas four or five days beforehand. But I think this is even worse by being given all this information right here in the council meeting, we've got forty-five minutes to go, and plenty of important, uh, agenda items to go.
The, and the, Counsel A G?
Yeah, um, sorry, um, councillors and everyone. Look, I think the, the lawyers here made it clear that there is a code of conduct by the local government, isn't it? Do we, we have, uh, uh, me, meeting practice, okay. So sometimes, you know, we're trying to do somebody's job. If we have lawyers, let them sit down, draft the thing, comes to council, and go through with us. But if there's submission that needs to be done, let's find the appropriate way, go and sit down with the lawyers and say, look, is this within the Code of, um, Meeting Practice? And so that we don't try and to do it on the spot. Um, that's my suggestion, because if, imagine you're doing the coach job. You are the soccer player, there is a coach, there's a role for the coach, and there's a role for the soccer player. So, as a striker, I can be coach, but make suggestion to my coach and say, look, instead of kicking with left foot, can I try the right foot? And so that we, we don't come here and trying to interject and do this and do that. Because we have been sitting on this for maybe more than three times or four times. So please, if we can allow the lawyers in the room to do their job, and those, um, councillors that also have, um, a background of law, can also go and speak to them and say, this is my suggestion, and they can, um, see that if you meet with the local government, um, practice, thank you.
All right, um, so just to clarify the motion, would the motion then be talked, say that, um, we defer the matter uh, to allow for, uh, General Counsel, to allow General Counsel to review the, um, the, the following proposed changes and brief councillors prior to bringing it back to council?
This is the problem, Mr Mayor, is we've already had a briefing session, and it's gone to council once, and now we're going back to a briefing session, and it's going to come back to council. It's like, it's just, it's a vicious cycle between council briefing sessions and council meetings.
Look, thank you, thank you, Counsel, I just, um, if we can please...
Yeah, so quickly, may I suggest that the lawyers in the room, councillors that are very, I mean, everybody's point is validated, um, va- validated. So please, those who are interested, because these points and all that, um, once it becomes a, a document, we all accept it. But if you're interested to sit with the General Counsel to make sure that the draft is done properly, just book a meeting with them and make your submission, so when it comes, it's done and dusted, instead of trying to make changes on the floor right here. Um, that's my suggestion, please.
Yep, um, I'm going to make a, a comment before I give the right of reply, but can I just, just confirm that we're, that the mover and secutor are happy with the motion being proposed in that format? Yep, great, okay. So, I just want to say, I'm going to be probably a very unpopular person for saying this. The reality is, the amount of work that, uh, we need to do as a baseline, uh, work as a city i- is already a lot. On top of that, the amount of reports that we're asking for and the level of detail that we want um, is leading, i- i- is even more on top of that baseline, which itself is already high. So if you look at the, I don't know how many pa, what do we have? Two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight pages. Um, it's not going to be able to be read over a five day period. The reality is, um, we need to actually have two meetings every month. Um, that's the, that's the reality. If not, you're going to, these, these meetings are just long. Um, and not only long, because they want to be, there, there's a lot to go through, and there's a lot of information. And there are practical issues with regards to staff, and by saying that if they need this much notice to have all this sort of stuff, well, you know, they're pretty much, the, the meeting, the agenda for next meeting is going to close probably in two days after this meeting. You know, which really kind of slows us down and creates operational challenges in the organisation. So, I'm just flagging that, but that's, if you want to have smaller agendas, you know, break them up. Look at having two meetings, have them quicker, more time to read. So therefore, if you do have to defer something, you're only deferring it for a couple of weeks and you're moving on. So, um, yes, that's my comment. Right of reply, Counselor Monahan?
Counselor Monahan, thank you, I appreciate, and I didn't raise a point of order, but I'd appreciate, in this place, I'm a councillor.
I just say councillor, didn't I?
Sorry, yeah, no, 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 but I, I keep being referred to as the lawyer, I mean, we seem to be referred to as the lawyers. I mean, we're elected representatives here as councillors.
I think Counsel A G was referring to, the, no, those, the council lawyers.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's not quite how it sounded. Um, in, in any event, um, I won't go through each of them in detail or individually, that's what the, um, process is set out for. But, um, one specific point about the notice for meetings, section three sixty-seven subsection one, um, at least, the general ma, the general manager of a council must send to each councillor at least three days before each meeting a notice specifying the following. Um, so I'm fairly confident that, um, despite these changes uh, coming this afternoon, that they are, uh, within, uh, both the meaning of the Act and the Model Code of Meeting Practice, um, on a number of other points that were raised, um, about restrictions upon merril minutes. Other councils, uh, restrict, uh, the submission of merril minutes to seven days prior to the council meeting. Um, others seem to do three days. Three days doesn't seem to be, um, a terribly um, inconvenient or unrealistic goal, um, uh, so that we can consider matters here, um, properly, uh, with due notice. Um, but that being said, um, given to something that, uh, we didn't have much notice of, um, that is the motion that I've put, uh, here, we've had a very, um, intelligent and, and spirited debate over the matter. Um, so I, I don't think we should really discount, uh, the eleven of us. Uh, we seem to be quite capable of, of getting through some of these matters. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll end on, I'll end on a, the general point that, um, I'm quite happy for this to be, um, deferred to a subsequent meeting, given that, uh, we aren't on a strict to time scale other than twelve months, uh, from the election. Um, and it's probably best with these things, given that they have to go out for public, uh, consultation, uh, that you do them once, do them properly, so you don't have to revisit them. Um, a good, a good, uh, example from earlier this evening was, um, the grants policy, which seems to have been amended, how many times? Three?
Three.
Um, so I mean, probably let's do it once, do it properly, um, and then move forward.
Thank you. Now, uh, right of reply has been had, and I'll put the motion. Uh, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. Next item is called,
Division, please.
Division. All those in favour, please stand. Against? Declare the motion carried. Next item is corp zero three, investment report, November twenty four, page two thousand four hundred and twenty four, with the recommendation on two thousand four hundred and twenty five.
Hope you move the recommendation.
Moved, councillor McNair, seconded, councillor AJ? Without revisiting old business, but this is an example of a report that has to come every month. And potentially with the changes to what happened before, this wouldn't be able to get into the timely fashion as requested. All right, moved, seconded, any discussion? I just have a question. What, what do we need to do to get a report like this with regards to our property assets? Or our commercial property assets? I know we have two thousand properties, but let's say there were ten to twenty commercial type properties. You know, for example, I know we have a, well, not, this is not a commercial property, but this is, we, councillor owns a house that's been rented and I don't think it's had a rent increase for ten years, fifteen years.
Mr Mayor, if we take that on notice, we'll get back to you with a, with something. As was mentioned earlier, we have brightly with our list of assets, we've talked to council about project twenty six, which would have also incorporated reviewing our assets and both the commercial and other. So certainly we can come back with a report that will give you some feedback on what you're asking.
With the indulgence of the moved and seconded, can I recommend another point be added to this, please? That council received, the council, let me just think of the wording for a second. Receive a similar investment report for our commercial property assets, brackets to be determined and be reported to council at the same frequency. Are the mover and securer happy with that? Yeah, great. All right, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare unanimous. Councillor Green, you have a presentation. Over to you.
On Tuesday, the third of December, I had the great pleasure to attend the Autism Advisory and Support Services Work Ready Graduation. The event was a testament to the achievement of graduate students who had worked hard in achieving the goal of completing a TAFE course, building their skills and confidence to take the next step of employment with the support of families and a cohort of wonderful TAFE teachers and AASS staff. On behalf of AASS, I'd like to share with you the following. Somewhere Nice is a purpose driven social enterprise, opportunity shop and cafe in Railway Street, dedicated to forging a brighter future for young Australians with disabilities. Autism Advisory Support Services established the shop in October twenty twenty three. The core mission revolves around investing profits to generate employment and training opportunities, specifically tailored for people with disabilities. When council chose to support up, support Somewhere Nice through a matching grant programme, they were direct, we were directly contributing to the growth of a more inclusive Liverpool community and fostering a better future for everyone involved. The ultimate goal is to empower individuals with disabilities and pave the way towards a more equitable and compassionate society. AASS firmly believes that establishing an inclusive workplace is the cornerstone of achieving such a future by creating an environment where people with disabilities can develop their skills, pursue fulfilling careers, aiming to dismantle barriers and promote inclusivity across all aspects of life. Since opening in October twenty twenty three, the Work Prep Connect has seen seventeen students successfully complete the programme, with at least four students enrolling in further tertiary education at TAFE and others volunteering in a variety of outlets. Three students have volunteered to help at Somewhere Nice to gain more experience while they look for mainstream employment. As a result of the success of this programme, TAFE will be offering a certificate one in retail from twenty twenty five with the Work Prep Connect Programme acting as a foundational programme. The Liverpool Council Matching Grant, received earlier this year, has been integral in assisting Somewhere Nice to grow and provide the best supports possible for students' learning work skills. AASS would like to thank Liverpool Council for their support and offer their testimonial as an example of the positive tangible impact council has in the community by supporting community organisations such as AASS. And together, we can build a society that embraces diversity and ensures equal opportunities for all. Thank you. It's amazing what a matching grant can do. And the students that were there, it was just so amazing and so inspirational. You know, over twelve young people graduated that day and it was fabulous.
Wonderful, thank you councillor Green. Next item is norm zero one, Lebanon foreign aid, page three sixty six, tabs twenty seven, recommendation on three sixty six.
I've just got to, just to typo, if we can add to point two. Just started off with given the budget constraints.
Yeah, one second, let's see what the motion is first.
Yep. So point two, start the sentence with given the budget constraints, then write that. And instead of the word match on the second line, call that reimburse. And then you can delete the words, where is it on that one? Be reimbursed to Liverpool Council N two, remove all that. Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Do you want to take, is that, sorry, happy to take another councillor Moon?
Happy to second that with some changes. Number one would be the actual, name of the actual norm, Lebanon foreign aid. If we're going to do Lebanon foreign aid and leave statement two on there to bring the Australian government total package humanitarian aid to eighty four point five million dollars since October seventh, we're talking about Lebanon or we're talking about Middle East? Can we separate those two from each other? That's number one. And to correct councillor Ossowski on that norm, Lebanon received two million dollars from the federal government in September and a further ten million dollars on the twenty fifth of October of twenty twenty four. So prior to that, I believe there was none there. So the remaining eighty four point five million, if we were to talk statistics, went to I believe Iraq, Syria, the ten million to Lebanon, including, plus the other two, which makes it twelve. And the remaining went to Israel and Palestine. So if we're going to say the Middle East, so that the naming of the whole norm should change to the Middle East, or we take out that Middle East part out and state, and thank the federal government for the ten and two million dollars that they donated to Lebanon?
Yeah, so what you're saying is this motion and the grant was purely about Lebanon?
Yeah.
Not about a region?
That's correct.
So yeah, they're two different, they're two different things. So if you, the.
The amendment would be to take out number two. No, no, number two, so basically you got, yeah, take that out. Write to the federal Australian, to the federal government, contrarian to them on the recent aid of twelve million dollars, sorry, of twelve million dollars in humanitarian assistance to support civilians in Lebanon impacted by the escalating of the conflict. So that's point one. Well, there's, I don't believe that we need to apologise to the federal government because I personally wasn't aware when I made that statement. And as a result, I believe councillor Harwood remember that day when I came up and said, I'll do some research and I'll get back to your numbers and I've done that. So that statement is incorrect, so we need to take that out. And I totally support the actual number two. If the state government's happy to give us the twenty grand, I'll totally support it. Why not, as long as the people get it at the end of the day?
Cover everything councillor Moon?
Then if we remove those two, we should remove this. It's consistent with the mayor's comments in the Australian newspaper on the eighth of December, as local government has no role in international affairs, that doesn't belong there anymore. No, no, I'm not, I'm not against the statement, but it has no binding in the comments anymore.
Yep, all right, is there any further discussion? All right, there's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Next item is norm zero two, Liverpool Olympic. Microphone please councillor.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. I have a conflict of interest for Liverpool Olympics, non peculiar and less than significant. And I'll leave the room because my two sons play for the soccer club and I know one of the coaches as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Can you just have the form fill out, please?
Yes.
Councillor, done, all done?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll just point out, councillor Sevji, just with regards to point two of your motion. If we can just scroll down a little bit, please. If you recall, I think it was the last council meeting, chapter one of our last council meeting, I think it was, we, we care council resolved to open up an expressive of interest for different sporting clubs and community groups who want to do stuff with council to come and talk to us. So I'm just concerned that the point two sort of skips that process. No issue with the spirit of it, but I just think that the point of that was to let everyone to come and say hello and so it can be clear and transparent, so.
Might it be that council might encourage or Olympic to participate in the EOI?
Yes, that would be better. Would you be happy with that councillor Ossowski?
As Spiero mentioned, this club does a lot of work that probably council, we do with the grants. They fund it all themselves and they actually fund a lot of things that a lot of these organisations come to us cap in hand. So they are willing to do a public private partnership, put their own money into this. So I don't want two taken out, if we can reword it to somehow be inclusive, fair enough. But I don't believe there's an issue with point two being in there.
Well, if you, yeah, it's a, that's why I guess encourage them to participate in the expressive interest process. There's a lot of guidelines with respect to unsolicited proposal, proposals. Because other clubs will say, well, why weren't we given this opportunity? And hence why the EOI process is probably the best time, best way to go about it because everyone has an equal opportunity.
What, what is the expression of interest process? Is that, is there a, they just come to council with a proposal or is there, is like a deadline on it, it's given to everyone? I can get some clarification on that.
It hasn't, it hasn't gone out yet, from my understanding, it's probably something for the new, new, or to go out and I'll get clarification. But ultimately it'll be open for a certain period of time for people to say, want to do something with us, go for it. I think we'll have to refer back to that merril minute.
And I'll see director to make some comment.
Thank you through the acting CEO. The expression of interest you're referring to is for the use of our sporting fields. There'll be a separate process in terms of this unsolicited proposal. And there's, if you point to the bottom of the paragraph in the CEO's comments, I made reference to the Local Government Act and in particular part two, division two, that defines the use and management of community land, including the provision of entering into a lease and licence. And my colleague David will support the mechanism and instrument to do this. So we're very supportive, we just need to make sure that we're following the proper governance. And we'll work through that and come back to you with the best solution.
So just to add to that, there are other requirements in the Local Government Act before we can enter into, I think, the kind of arrangements that you're thinking of. You mentioned, I think, public private partnership, there are other constraints around setting up separate entities. So there's quite a few legal hoops to jump through there. I think the point that the mayor raised around opportunity, you know, how, how do we end up in an arrangement with one particular organisation is something we would need to consider as well.
Do you have a suggestion of the wording on that, part two?
It's better to, to remove it because once again, if you're going through an EOI process, which should be fair and open, if you're encouraging one through a resolution, then it may look like you're favouring them and preempting opposition. Yeah, sorry, you and I.
Well, it just appears to me that you are with that motion. I mean, we, seeking opportunities and, you know, agreements, partnership arrangements should be generally to, you know, a whole range of bodies. So I think singling one out might have, might have its issues.
When, when does the expression of interest or whatever it's called come out?
We are working through, through the CEO, we're working through the plans and management of each of the sporting fields so we can then go out for expression of interest. So the clubs have been extended to at least July with the view that we will go out to public exhibition on the fields, sporting grounds, once that plan of management is defined. We can't enter into a licence outside of that, is my understanding, David.
So I think once again, if you, if you have, if you kept it at point one and let the process happen and go from there.
Maybe somehow if we can, I mean, it's great that we're recognising them, but we want an action item. If we don't have a date, these guys want to invest in that, in that ground and we need to be encouraging other organisations that want to do that at various other grounds. How do we word it in a way where we can sit down with them without waiting for this expression of interest deadline to work out what they want and how how to make it work?
Through the acting CEO, councillor Restres, we're actually actively working with the club on the master plan because we know the intention, sorry, excuse me, the intention of the club. There's a number of complexities which have also defined in the report around environmental and the like, but we're trying to work through that, trees and the like. However, I think broadly speaking, the club are seeking potentially a relocation to be able to expand. And that's when the expression of interest process would be very beneficial. So we could continue working with them because we are very supportive of. So we could continue working with them because we are very supportive of their ambitions and they have been a well-reconised and wonderful club for Liverpool. It's just working through, unfortunately, some of the complexes we get on Crown Land and the like.
Maybe if we say continue working with the club to explore opportunities of expansion or something like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's in here, Crown Land and, yeah.
All right. If we can remove the rest, remove the rest of that. Yep, good. Do you have a seconder? Second to councillor Kurneeb. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Someone please ask councillor AJ to come back, please. Next item is NOM three, land acquisitions and detention basins, page 370, tab 29, with a recommendation on page 370, councillor Hart. Just got that councillor, can you please turn off your microphone?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to make one minor amendment to the motion in light of the acting CEO's comment, point six. Provide these reports to the February twenty, twenty sixth, February twenty twenty five meeting. Keep the rest the same. Second off?
Second, seconded councillor Moon. Any discussion?
I'd just like to, I just wanted to note, we've spoken about contribution plans. It was one of the items that we've previously discussed in this council meeting. But one of the other components that we haven't really looked into this council term has been acquisitions. I know in the confidential items, we've seen a bunch of acquisitions that we need to make a decision on. We don't really get the full picture or the overarching strategy. So it'd be good to get, you know, get a report back on, you know, the current status of acquisitions, particularly in, in Ostrall and North Levington, in Edmondson Park. And, you know, from the, the compulsory acquisition item that, you know, that took ten years, like, it seems like there's probably some undue delays there that we can probably dig into perhaps and understand the reasons why some of these things take such a long time. Because the longer it takes, the more it costs us. Because I think we all saw in the contributions plan, there's a pretty significant deficit. And that's not really fault of our own. It's, it's just rising property prices and we're not, the contribution plan's balance is not keeping up.
Wonderful. Any other further discussion?
Can I add a point seven to that if you don't mind? If we add on there a report, which properties are referred to under the compulsory acquisitions are in the Land and Environment Court, it'd be good to know.
I think they're already in the legal report that we had last month.
I'll just, maybe include it. It'd be nice just to tailor it into specifically the one spot because that legal report was like an encyclopedia.
Nice. Is the mover happy with that? Seconder?
Yep, that's second.
Second to councillor Moon. All right. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Next item is confidential items, conf 01, page 2093.
What booklet is that on?
Don't have it written down actually. Book three?
I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I've just got a question. Or question, sorry.
Yep. Do you have a seconder? Second to councillor McNaught.
Thank you, through the chair, through the acting CEO. This report gives the current value, market value of I wasn't going to say the number. I wasn't, I, sorry, I learnt my lesson from last time. The current value of the property in question. Are we able to, and probably has to be taken on notice, cognizant that we are still open to the public, how much the property in question costs to develop? The total cost of the building?
We can answer that, but I think the, that will give, that'll determine what property we're talking about.
All right.
Could we, I've got some questions, but can we maybe move this item to when we're talking about COF 06? Because it relates to that and there's a few other items we can get through before we sort of get bogged down in the next ten minutes.
Yeah, but I can flag it now. It looks like we're going to have to come back because I don't think we're going to finish in ten minutes, if that's the case. So you want to move, what, to go into closed session?
Yeah, if we, maybe let's, we can have a discussion. Yeah.
All right. With the furthest matter. See then the meeting, all those and move councillor Restevsky, second to councillor Hart, any discussion? All those for, all those against declared carried, we'll move that one on. Next item is conf 02, page 218. Do you have a mover?
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor Monahan, second to councillor Hart. Any discussion?
Just have a question, sorry. I might have missed this, so my apologies in advance. This report states how, the number of properties have already been acquired. Can, can we be advised how many more properties need to be acquired? What's in the pipeline?
Can we take that on notice? We can provide the information, but, yep.
Yep, okay. All right. No further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Next item is conf 04, page 2138, with a recommendation on page 2139.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor Monahan, second to councillor deputy mayor. Any discussion?
Forgive me if I'm wrong, was this something that we, is it relate to something that we resolved at last council meeting?
I'd like to refer that, answer that question by the property, manager of property services.
Through the acting CEO, this progressive series of acquisitions, there was a report to a previous council and this is the fourth property that we're acquiring, so this should be, yes, progressively. So this should be the last piece of a jigsaw.
There's just a item here that says the consent authorities advise the applicant six months to make the payment of the security due by 24 November 2024. Has that been made or?
Through the acting CEO, the time of writing the report, it hadn't been made, but it had been made by the 24th of November. We have confirmed that with New South Wales planning. And planning have also asked us, once we've expended expenditure on the acquisitions and constructions, to submit an application for the funding.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Next item is conf 05, page 2145, recommendation on page 2146. Move deputy mayor, seconded. Councillor Green, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against declared carried. Next item is, are we doing, are we going to do with conf 01 or?
Zero six.
Conf 06, so that's at the end.
Yeah, I've got a motion.
Councillor McNaught, you have a motion? So page 2437, with a recommendation on page 2438.
So the recommendation is similar to the one in the book. So agree to the remedial actions. And then I will just refer to them probably if we can put dot points as numbers and positions, yes. So agree to the remedial actions in the report table. In the report table two, so item one. Oh, sorry, don't write the words. So that was just me. Item one, item two, item four, item five, and item three with the exception of, now, here goes my old lady eyes. Project 103926 and project 103927.
An attachment one.
Oh, yes, sorry, of attachment one.
Do you have a second for your motion? Second to councillor AJ. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against. I said, what's your motion councillor?
Okay, if I can have it on the screen.
Councillor, oh, sorry, I was going to say one and, one and one.
Do you have a second for your motion? Councillor Kurneeb?
Just trying to see if it's put upright. Point one should be agreed to recommendations one, two, three and four outlined in the report. And then you can remove two and three. I don't know why they're there.
So no, no five, six and seven?
No, no, I'm just going through it now. Agree to recommendation one, two, three, four in the report. Number two should be yes, only the project numbers below in the schedule are to be deferred, yep. Three, yep, four, just having a look. Yeah, that looks right.
Yep, councillor McNaught.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a point that it doesn't read, doesn't make sense to say agree to recommendations one, two, three and four, but then to break up that recommendation in point two, you would have to just change the way that reads, I believe.
All right, putting, putting that aside councillors, we need to come back and all look at their diaries.
Could tomorrow at six work? I mean, that
Tomorrow at six doesn't work.
No.
Thursday is our Christmas party. Whether you want to try to come in before that from, at four o'clock? Well, you want to get it done before the Christmas party so we can, yeah? Yes, exactly. Does four work? We have our five. Does five work? Bearing in mind that you can log on online and you can still participate online as you're Five? We don't, we should not. Yep. Yep. All right. I'll declare the morning, the meeting adjourned till Thursday at 5:15pm on the 12th. Thank you everyone.